I don't disagree, but here's the deal.
Okay, I'll tell you this.
I know.
You wouldn't even know it started.
I know.
Yeah.
But that was, that was one of those dead signs. It's like 13th Avenue.
Look, it's just everything about it.
They can go for it. Listen, they can go to lunch, they can talk about their kids.
The reason we have to...
They can talk about what they're doing that weekend. They just can't say, I think we should take money to school.
Good morning, everyone.
No, I didn't.
Madam Clerk, are you ready? Good morning and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, Wednesday, June 15th, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. in City Hall Council Chambers. At this time, as always, we will ask for our pastor to come forward and do an invocation, and then we'll do the pledge. Please stand, everyone.
Good morning, everyone. Would you bow your heads, please? Father, I'm just reminded today of your ability to see us all as if we're the only ones on the planet. So, Father, I thank you for everyone that's in this room, our city leaders, our department heads, and all that are under them that serve, and every citizen in the friendly city of Bradenton. I'm reminded that you're excited about them, that you know they're significant, that they're needed, and they're deeply loved. So, I pray, Father, in these proceedings, that they would have the favor of God, the heart of God, the mind of Christ, and the wisdom as they navigate the city and make the decisions. I pray for just a fresh wind of your presence to even right now fall upon us, that we would sense that you are near. I pray for your kingdom to come, and your will to be done in every life on every front that's in the sound of my voice. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Pastor, for the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
We have a proclamation this morning for Juneteenth, June 19th, 2022. Whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state, the people whereof shall then be in rebellion against the United States, shall then henceforward and forever free. And whereas more than two years would pass before the news reached African-Americans living in Texas, when on June 19th, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his regiment arrived in Galveston and spread the word that slavery had been abolished. And whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commer- excuse me, commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. In 1991, the Florida Legislature recognized Juneteenth as a holiday and encouraged all citizens to allow the day to be an inspiration and encouragement for future generations. Whereas, in June of 1996, Manatee County citizens Willie Clemmons, Ruby Fobbs, MacArthur Sellers, and Floyd Roundtree organized and facilitated the county's first Juneteenth celebration in the city of Bradenton. And whereas, on June 17th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, which officially made Juneteenth a federal holiday. And whereas, Juneteenth is an opportunity to honor and celebrate the achievements and contributions of African-Americans in our community, state, and nation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, is mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim June 18th, 2022, as Juneteenth, sorry, June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth Day in Bradenton, and encourage all citizens to recognize this very special day.
All right, thank you. And we have some folks want to come forward. And the reason she said originally June 18th was because that's actually when their celebration is, over at the Dream Center, on June 18th at 11:00 to 4:00. But the official day is actually June 19th, so we will celebrate that for our citizens. So, please come forward, state who you are, and give us a presentation.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Sharon Jefferson. I am the president of Recess Education, which is the coordinator of the Juneteenth Reading Conference, as well as the Juneteenth Community Festival. And I have here with me Mr. MacArthur Sellers. Wanted to honor him today as being one of the, what, four or five members of a committee back in 1996, who coordinated the very first Juneteenth celebration in Manatee County. So, I wanted to give some space to him, and I wanted to, once again, thank all of you for your support, and I, you know, we want Juneteenth to always be remembered as a time of reflection, for movement, to ensure equity and justice for all. So, thank you once again.
And, and Doctor, we'd like to also make sure, stay up there, because we want to get a picture before you sit down.
Okay, do we want to go down and join them?
Just, yeah, when he's finished, we'll go down.
First of all, thank you for an opportunity to, to be here. I'm Robin MacArthur Sellers, and I and Willie Clemmons and a few, Rui and Roundtree and others, we thought it, it was an opportunity to share Juneteenth with Bradenton from the Pal. And so, that's what we did. And bless his heart, he, he, he was a visionary beyond his days. He passed in 2004, but he said, wouldn't it be nice if this was a state, a national holiday? And lo and behold, it became one. You are all invited to the Dream Center on June 18th, where Dr. Sharon Jefferson has put together this year's Juneteenth celebration. So, please, start at 11 o'clock, come out and enjoy. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Reverend Sellers, and obviously, thank you for your service to our country also. We appreciate that. All right, why don't we get down, we'll get a picture?
Do we transcribe?
That would be great for...
(applause)
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next, we have a presentation from the Florida Department of Transportation.
Good morning.
Good morning. Richard Ojevalk, Florida Department of Transportation, Project Development Manager. First off, I'd like to thank y'all for the redo. Sorry about some of the little technical snafus from two weeks ago, but made it, I actually made it here on time, I didn't get stuck in traffic. And Gail, we've got presentations, so I think we're good. Several y'all have heard this presentation prior, but I'm going to change up, I'm the department. I have Gail Woods and Amy Serens here, who are consultant project managers. And if we're online, I have a host of other professionals that are listening in, because this is a big project, and we have a lot of experts involved to make sure that this time we do it right, or at least do our best faith effort to do it correctly. The Department of Transportation has been actually trying to cross the Manatee River since about 1986. It was one of the first jobs I came here down to, and at that time, it was a more predetermined plan that with 301, it was a straight shot up, Ellington Gillette, going through the historic trailer park and Braden Castle. And at the kickoff meeting, we were welcomed by about 1,500 citizens that were not happy. I think this time, we got about 40,000 citizens that may not be happy, but we're trying to work better and work it down, because the magnitude of the project has gotten bigger. But we're trying to approach it in a stepwise, sensible fashion, and make sure that we can, I'm going to, ah, okay. There we go. I'm going to open up my presentation, my portion of it. I hope it's this one.
I don't think that's, no, that's not it.
Nope, that's not it. I apologize. Whoops, let me go to...
Yes, the top three?
Oh, these top three, okay. That one, all right. See, if the consultants don't tell me what to do, I can't do it. Anyway, so I'm just going to give an overview, and I'm going to try to explain the overall project process. And I've tried a couple times, and it hasn't come out right, so you guys are, I'm going to guinea, or test y'all out on trying to get it crossed better. So, on this slide, you're going to see a lot of different projects that are within downtown Bradenton and Palmetto. So, and one, and two of these projects, you'll see at a smaller scale is the De Soto River, the bridge crossing itself, and also up and down along US 41 and US 41 Business by the airport, going all the way up the Green Bridge and coming out in Palmetto. Now, we're here to talk about the Braden and Palmetto Connector. We're also here to talk about what we call the US 41 Congestion Management and Safety Study. Everybody thinks, you know, we're doing another study, but actually, we're moving into an implementation phase. The Sarasota Manatee MPO has been working on the US 41 Multimodal Emphasis Corridor Study and implementing those projects since about 2005. The department's been working with them, and we've also been working on, like I just said, replacing the De Soto Bridge. We're moving forward with those two projects separately underneath different contracts. Looking at the De Soto Bridge, it has become a critical safety issue, and it does need to be replaced by 2027. However, we are going to fix that and make sure, and by fixing it, fix the assumptions that we have to make with that in order to establish the travel demand for the need for additional crossings for the river. And by that, we're going to go by your comprehensive plans, and we're going to adhere to those as far as it's called out as six lanes on y'all's comprehensive plans. And we're going to work forward from that to document the travel demand. In addition to that, we're going to use the results and information and the improvements that we're going to be working on with your MPO and with MCAT, like along US 41 Business and along the Green Bridge, as it transforms from the current quarter that it is into a transit multimodal quarter, to see how much travel demand is accommodated by that. And by fixing these numbers, it gives us a firm base in order to understand how much travel demand we need to meet within the future. So, what you're going to hear today is you're going to hear Ms. Woods go through the Braden and Palmetto Connector Study, where we've got 10 potential corridors that need to be looked at. The De Soto Bridge, if we look at it as a six-lane facility coming across with multimodal features to connect up with things like the Riverwalk and other things like that, and to be more in tune with your comprehensive plan. We want, because of changes in policies with federal funding, it mandates a higher level of integration between local, state, and federal plans in order to secure funding. Some of these offshoots are things like environmental justice. These are newer things that have come, they're not actually newer, but they have been formulating throughout the years, and now they've come into a specific type category and evaluation. A good way to look at those type of issues is a group of people, and there's one portion, a portion of them, looking over a fence to see what's going on on the other side. Not everybody's tall enough to see over the fence, so you bring different boxes or ladders so people can see. That's the environmental justice portion of it. Equity is taking down the fence and letting everybody participate and not only see. So, environmental justice identifies shortfalls, equity tries to make up the difference. And that's where there's a stronger emphasis on local, state, and federal plans in looking at these planning. Now, understanding that at the last, our last attempt, there was a couple of alternatives that were shown that were high-impact and very easy to fix. However, they did not support issues like environmental justice or interconnecting neighborhoods, things that, when you read into your comp plans, not only yours, but Bradenton, I mean, excuse me, Palmetto's and Manatee County, interconnectivity in neighborhood, promoting all of the great historic and other features around here, Bishop Plantarium, you're downtown right here in Main Street, and LECOM, we're also going to be talking to your staff about LECOM Park and how we can integrate transportation solutions to make it more mobile. Also, looking at the amount of people that want to go through, the through traffic that was discussed in the last traffic. How do we accommodate that in a way that still promotes these newer things that we're having to evaluate? And so, what we're doing with these projects is that, the reason I have such a large complement of consultant staff, is one of these projects you'll see, and it's a blue one, and it's right there next to Manatee County, and that's resurfacing along US 301. It's taking place over the next five years. We're working with those teams to look at changing out traffic signals or improving pedestrian access in order to reduce the number of phases in the signal and improving the capacity on that road. There's a small example that we've been working at for the intersection of 301 and 64, we're displacing a left turn. That concept may be prevalent all along the quarter, and it may gain 15% to 20% capacity. So, we want to, so we're taking, the DOT is taking a more active and responsive look at projects that are in the pipeline and how to implement them to help future projects. And that's what I was, I've been trying to illustrate on this first slide since I've been doing it, and I'm hoping, hopefully, I'm doing, I've been practicing, so it gets better as I go along. But with that, the, the two main projects you'll see that are going to, that right now affect the two, you know, have an impact to the bridges, are the US, the Braden and Palmetto Connector, which Ms. Woods will be presenting, but first will be Ms. Amy Serens to elaborate on how we're taking the multimodal emphasis corridor for US 41 and trying to bring those things in the process, because the MPO is working on transit prioritization, and we can see an increase in capacity of the ability to carry person trips over the river. So, when we go forward and look at a new crossing, we want to know, make sure that, you know, look, we need a four-lane facility, but it needs also carry this much pedestrian, a bicycle, or emergency traffic, like a lane for that, or a transit priority lane. So, that's what we're talking about, this going around, we're talking about meeting with your staffs more intimately, trying to get all the feel for that information, and then also coming to all of y'all at the council as far as one-on-one meetings and trying to explain and make sure you guys fully understand the process, and even looking towards y'all as champions, to help get the positive word and the correct word out versus there's a lot of other information going around. So, with that, I'm going to say thank you, and I'm going to see if I can click the right presentation, or I may just give up and let her do it.
Good, thank you.
I'm not, if I'm going to let you do it. But thank y'all.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, let me switch this over. And I know some of you have also seen this one as well, so, let me see. Okay, there we go. So, again, I'm Amy Sermons with VHB. I'm the project manager for what we are calling the CMAS Project, so you'll be hearing these project acronyms, the Corridor Mobility and Safety Study. This project is from University Parkway in Sarasota up to 17th Street West in Palmetto. Feedback there. But first, I want to talk about safety. As OJ mentioned, our, our purpose, our main purpose here is to improve safety. For this project, we're looking for all modes of transportation. I don't know if you guys are hearing that feedback, so, but I want to talk a little bit about distracted driving and work zone awareness. Distracted driving, I'm not going to give the quiz, because I know a number of you have heard this before. Distracted driving is really any activity that takes a person's attention away from the primary task of driving. Our top three distracting, distracted driving activities, the number one is eating at 52.6%. Number two is texting at 23.6%, and number three is people taking selfies and photos while they are driving at 11.7%.
Children's four.
Probably, probably. And then work zone safety, we want to, you know, it's everyone's job to pay attention. We have our, our workers out there on the streets, improving our roadways. We want to make sure that we keep them safe as we're passing through work zones. So, be aware of speed limits, and you move over when you can, and just be aware through active zones. So, real quick, OJ went through the current area projects. We are, we are constantly adding to that list, so that every time you see it, you may see more projects added to that map of everything going on in the area. We'll talk about some of the previous studies that were done, and then an overview of this project, the CMAS Project, and then get into our proposed goals and objectives and measures of effectiveness. So, this is the same graphic you saw that OJ presented. Again, it's this, the point here is there's a lot going on in the area, and we are working to tie all of this together to make efficient transportation, safe, safety within, within the whole area. So, there's been a number of studies that have been previously, previously completed in the area. OJ talked about a few of these. There was a US 41 Complete Streets Corridor Planning Study that was done on the south end of the project. There's several other intersection studies, access management studies that were done by DOT. Additionally, the MPO has conducted a number of studies, like the gap analysis, and they are currently working on the US 41 Transit Choices Study. I'm sorry, they've completed the Transit Choices Study, and they're working through the next steps. We are coordinating with their teams to get their information and tie that into our project. I'm not going to read through all these, but we have summarized all of the, each of these studies and the recommendations from each of these studies. This has become the starting point for our US 41 CMAS Project. When you get the chance to look through these, if you have the handout, you, what you will find is that all of these studies talk about, about multimodal. We talk about improving the safety and efficiency for all modes, your vehicles, your transit, your pedestrians and bicycles through the corridor. Again, this is additional studies conducted by DOT. You'll see the focus on safety in these studies through the corridor, as well as access management. But now focusing in on the US 41 Project Overview, our, our purpose of this project, again, is to enhance multimodal mobility and safety along the corridor. Again, we're looking at US 41 and US 41 Business from University Parkway in Sarasota to 17th Street West in Palmetto. That 17th Street West is where the MCAT station is, so that's our endpoint on the north. We're also looking at advancing transit service operation strategies, so we want to work with MCAT and SCAT to make sure that we can help them improve their, their efficiency through the corridor for transit. And then, we also want to make sure that the neighborhoods can get to the transit corridor, that they can get to the bus stops, they can get to where they need. So, we're going to look at the whole area and find out where are their sidewalk gaps? Where are their issues getting to the bus stops, getting to the corridor? So, improving that access and that interconnectivity within the neighborhoods and adjacent to the corridor. Ultimately, then, we plan to develop corridor concepts that are going to move into the next stage, and those are going to develop implementation strategies to move forward for the project. So, where are we? This is our, our rough schedule currently. This is a study that's broken into two phases. We're in Phase One in the beginning. We are in the process of public outreach right now. This is part of our public outreach, meeting with the boards, the committees. We have project working group meetings, which we have actually tagged along with the MPO's Transit Choices Study, so that, I'm sorry, their Conop Study. And it's a lot of the same players, so we're trying to reduce the amount of meetings for folks, and so we're tagging on to their meetings as well. We'll be having individual stakeholder meetings as we go through the process. And we're currently in the process of conducting or preparing a questionnaire. It's going to be an online questionnaire. This is where we could use all of your help to get that information out. Once it's ready, share it with your constituents. We want to get information to inform our study through that questionnaire. This first phase, we're developing our goals and objectives, and then our measures of effectiveness, which I'll talk about in a moment, and collecting all of that existing information. We've got a lot out there, as you saw, and we keep getting more information in, which is what we're looking for during this stage, everything to inform our study, and then developing those strategies. Phase One is anticipated to be completed next spring, spring of 2023, and then we'll move into Phase Two, which is the development of the concepts. And of course, I mentioned transit, so one of our goals is to improve transit along the corridor. So, as you know, Route 99 is the main corridor running through, or the main transit route running through the corridor. It runs the length of the study. Currently, it has 20-minute AM and PM peak period services. They are, in the future, looking at it, adding a new Sunday service. There are several stations near the project, so we'll be looking at tying those stations to the corridor. One of our first things we look at when we start a project is, you know, where are our hotspots for safety for crashes? This information is related to the Sarasota and Bradenton area. We will be going back and adding in Palmetto. But as you can see, we looked at the past five years of crash data, and you can kind of see the trends with injuries and personal, personal damage, property damage. From those five years, there were 39 fatalities within the corridor. And then, one of the important facts in the blue box you can see is FDOT District One prepares a, what they call the Fatal Top 20 Segments. On the list here are the corridor, or the segments that are within our project limits. Number one and number two on that list, which is where you don't want to be, are within our project corridor. So, our goal is to get this corridor off of that Fatal Top 20 list. Again, another slide we, I'm not going to read through, but as OJ mentioned, we're going to make sure we're consistent with the comprehensive plans. We pulled the information from the city of Sarasota, city of Bradenton, Manatee County, and Sarasota County, also adding in city of Palmetto. What you see here are the transportation elements that relate to multimodal. All of these comprehensive plans talk about improving multimodal throughout the corridor, throughout the, the region. Another thing we did in this first step is to pull all of those previous studies that we, that we talked about, and looked at what were their goals and objectives. So, we're using that as our starting point to build in our goals and objectives for US 41 CMAS. So, with that, this is our first shot at potential goals and objectives, and we'd really like to get input from all of you. If you'd like to revise these, add some different ones, take some off. Our three goals and objectives that we have listed are to enhance multimodal mobility and safety for all users, advanced transit service, operation strategies, strategies along the study corridor, and then to improve the transportation network access and interconnectivity within neighborhoods, adjacent areas, and transit centers. And with any goals and objectives, we need to have a measure of effectiveness to make sure that what we are proposing is actually going to work. We are going to be collecting data to help build that baseline, to have something to measure against. Again, another thing that we would like to get your input on are these potential measures of effectiveness, and they are to improve the multimodal level of service, reduce the rate of fatalities and serious injuries along the corridor, enhance ADA accessibility and provide sidewalk connections to transit, improve sidewalk conditions in accordance with all of the manuals, and then increase the overall corridor travel time reliability, and that's for all modes, and then increasing the transit reliability during peak hours. That's what we're looking to measure. So, that's, again, this is where we are in the process, getting those goals and objectives and measures of effectiveness worked out, so that we can move forward into the next step and make sure that as we move forward, that we are working towards what all the communities want to see us do on the corridor. On the screen is our contact information. You heard OJ earlier, again, I'm Amy Sermons. You can contact either of us with any questions or information on the project.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Yep. Do we have any questions, or do we want to go through the other process first? Listen, question? Yeah, all right, just, you know, one second. So, Mr. Sanders?
I want you to be made aware of this, if you aren't already, our Second Avenue connection from Braden Castle to downtown. Have you seen this yet? I, I know you probably haven't, because I just saw, this is just in my chair this morning. So, Mr. McClellan and Kim have been working on this, and I think it'd be good if you looked at this, because this is the connection to get people off of Manatee Avenue down by Braden Castle and take them all the way downtown, and hopefully, this is not part of it, but hopefully, to the other connection back across Manatee. Yeah. You can have my copy if you want.
Kim and Barless?
You sure? Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Appreciate it. Yes.
All right. Now, I will get Gail's presentation set up.
The audience get to ask questions?
Not at this time. We're doing a presentation. Thank you.
Fantastic. Good morning, everyone. My name is Gail Wood...
We pulled the information from the City of Sarasota, City of Bradenton, Manatee County, and Sarasota County, also adding in the City of Palmetto. What you see here are the transportation elements that relate to multimodal. All of these comprehensive plans talk about improving multimodal throughout the corridor, throughout the region. Another thing we did in this first step is to pull all of those previous studies that we talked about and looked at what were their goals and objectives. So we're using that as our starting point to build in our goals and objectives for US 41 CMAS. So with that, this is our first shot at potential goals and objectives and we'd really like to get input from all of you. If you'd like to revise these, add some different ones, take some off. Our three goals and objectives that we have listed are to enhance multimodal mobility and safety for all users, advance transit service, operation strategies along the study corridor, and then to improve the transportation network access and interconnectivity within neighborhoods, adjacent areas, and transit centers. And with any goals and objectives, we need to have a measure of effectiveness to make sure that what we are proposing is actually going to work. We're going to be collecting data to help build that baseline, have something to measure against. Again, another thing that we would like to get your input on are these potential measures of effectiveness, and they are to improve the multimodal level of service, reduce the rate of fatalities and serious injuries along the corridor, enhance ADA accessibility and provide sidewalk connections to transit, improve sidewalk conditions in accordance with all of the manuals, and then increase the overall corridor travel time reliability, and that's for all modes, and then increasing the transit reliability during peak hours. That's what we're looking to measure. So that's, again, this is where we are in the process, getting those goals and objectives and measures of effectiveness worked out so that we can move forward into the next step and make sure that as we move forward, that we are working towards what all the communities want to see us do on the corridor. On the screen is our contact information. You heard OJ earlier, again, I'm Amy Sermonz. You can contact either of us with any questions or information on the project.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Yep. Do we have any questions or do we want to go through the other process first? Question? Yeah. All right, just one second. So, Mr. Sanders?
I want you to be made aware of this if you aren't already, our Second Avenue connection from Braden Castle to downtown. Have you seen this yet? I know you probably haven't because I just saw, this is in my chair this morning. So, Mr. McClellan and Kim have been working on this and I think it'd be good if you looked at this because this is the connection to get people off of Manatee Avenue down by Braden Castle and take them all the way downtown and hopefully, this is not part of it, but hopefully to the other connection back across Manatee.
Yeah, you can have my copy if you want.
You sure? Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Appreciate it. Yes.
All right. Now I will get Gail's presentation set up.
Not at this time, we're doing a presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Gail Woods and I am with Trans Systems and I am the project manager for the Bradenton-Palmetto project and I'm here today to give you an update on where we're So the purpose of the Bradenton-Palmetto project is to improve the regional multimodal connectivity and mobility and safety for the users in the cities of Bradenton and Palmetto. And the needs for the project, again, as Amy said earlier on her project and with our project, it is to increase safety, roadway capacity, traffic demand, and also provide economic development and increase bicycle and pedestrian mobility. And our study is broken up into two phases. Phase one is the Alternatives Corridor Evaluation that we call the A Study and phase two is the PDNE Study. And we are in phase one. So what is an A Study? An A Study will identify corridors and will have a draft purpose and need, which is why do we need the project? And once we have our corridors, we will evaluate those corridors and that is to make sure it's consistent with the long-range agency's transportation plan. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? What are the impacts to the environment? And the environment includes social, natural, and physical. And how well do those corridors improve safety and mobility? And at the end of the day, is the cost? How much does each corridor cost? We'll go through and eliminate corridors based on their impacts and then whatever recommended corridors we have will be put through the PDNE Study. So in talking about the regional traffic patterns, as OJ mentioned earlier, we have close to 31% of the traffic is pass-through traffic. Not only will we work on providing that traffic, but we also want to identify the traffic for the city of Bradenton and the traffic that is going around the Bradenton area. So these are the corridors. As OJ mentioned, we have 10 corridors. Six of the corridors were identified in the Central Manatee Study. Three additional corridors were identified with FDOT and we actually have one corridor that was presented by a resident and we've included that corridor. And we're also going to look at rail and transit routes. So the biggest part of this project is our communication plan and how we move forward with going through the process with the community. Number one is transparency. Anything and everything that we'll do, we will be transparent and make sure that the local agencies, the communities, and stakeholders are aware of what's going on. We want to identify project champions and as OJ mentioned earlier, we want to meet with each one of you to make sure that you have the correct information on what we're doing and how we are moving forward, so as constituents come to you, you'll be able to present them with the information that we have. We're in the process of meeting with the local agencies as well as stakeholders and we have planned meetings with the community. And we want to make sure that we hear from the community because this is your project and we want to make sure that their feedback is heard. And we also want to build confidence to make sure that you can trust FDOT in the process as we move through not only the A Study but the PDNE Study. We do have a website and those in the audience as well as the board members, this is a link to the website. This website will be adjusted as necessary as new information comes on board. This is our project schedule.
Ma'am, could you go back to that website for one moment? A few people are trying, in the audience, trying to get their phones up real quick. Hold on, there's a couple more I see with their phones up. All right, thank you.
This is our project schedule. It will be updated for the kickoff meeting. It will be the summer of 2022 and the public information meeting will be the winter of And as you notice on the schedule, our public engagement is throughout the process. This is the contact information that we have. Michelle Rutenhauser is the FDOT Project Manager and she can be reached as well as OJ for any questions.
Okay. And I think that, you know, this is going to be a long process from the standpoint of getting the community involved and the public. It's at MPO meetings, we've heard about certain parts of it. We'll hear about it here. There's going to be outreach, not just in this chamber, so it'll go through the neighborhood. I know we did that a few years ago where, you know, before your time and opportunity. And one of the things that OJ said, I think that, you know, something started about 2000, but if I remember correctly from being in this community my whole life, this project, especially all the total scale of things, started in the 80s. And if they would have built a bridge in the 80s, it might have been easier. So it's going to be a challenge to find locations now because of growth and development. But it's something that I think is so important and it's very important to have the public involved. And as an old wise councilperson once said, the FDOT of today is not the FDOT of yesteryear because it was, we're doing it, doesn't matter what you say, and it's happening now through LK's leadership and the state leadership. It's a lot kinder, gentler DOT, so we appreciate that. And obviously, there's a lot more stuff going to be coming out very soon and I know our Public Works Director and staff is going to be very intricately involved in helping through that, so. But we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Miss Ma'am. Yes, Ms. Coachman.
I want to know, how are you going to reach out to the public other than website or other than?
One of the items that we're going to have, if I go back to the schedule, is a kickoff meeting. And we're looking at inviting the entire community to the kickoff meeting so they can become aware that this project is starting and moving forward with that.
And how are you going to inform them of the kickoff meeting? That's, I guess that's what it would be.
We come up to the microphone.
First, on the first question, we've been going through and doing smaller projects. Give you a perfect example, Palmetto Trails Network in northeastern Palmetto, is that the trail started out, but then it's kind of circumvented a certain neighborhood. And then we wanted, after going through the process, we understood that they really wanted the trail to come through this neighborhood, but it was going to take a lot of one-on-one activism. So we started contacting the church leaders, the different various school organizations, much like the presentations morning, Juneteenth, the youth center. And we worked with the county, with Mr. Huntsaker, with the park, Lincoln Park being upgraded for the aquatics, so that... So what we're doing, we have a basic communications plan, but as we move through and we identify these different groups and these individuals and these ability to dive deeper into the community, we're adding them to the communications plan and it's a live or more living document. So as we go through, we will see more groups come on. You'll see environmental groups come on, you'll see historic groups. There's a huge wealth of historic buildings and sites all throughout this community that we want to get them involved. We want to make them part of the project so we can integrate all these great features into the city and make it more of a destination, just like your comprehensive plans talking about, is where it's walkable, bikeable, and it's nicer to stay, you know, or to be here and be a part of this area, you know, versus going to the beach or something like that. There's just as many things to do at the planetarium and all that. I remember coming here in the 70s and, you know, Pink Floyd Saturday night at the Bishop Planet. And you want to publicize those things and you want to get those brought out. The River Walk, you've got a beautiful River Walk that needs to be interconnected to both sides of the bay. So that's your smaller answer. And then the second half of your question, I got to remember what really, it was...
How we're going to make, was it how we're going to reach out?
Oh, how with the mailing is, I'm sorry, we are looking at like a bulk mailing, that is a, but then on top of that, we have transportation talk with the MPO. We want to get on government TV and we also want to do a lot of social media outreach, Facebook. You know, we can go on here and see the, you know, hate traffic on 41 with those groups. Hey, we can interject and we can put in, come to this meeting, come to this, right? So we understand it's a huge outreach thing, but we hope to build that as we go. We hope to get a lot at the first time, but we really want people to be, I gave an illustration before, when in the 80s when we came here on the first job, is that we were greeted by 1,500 angry people. We want to be greeted by a lot of people again, but more open-minded and we're trying to get it more relaxed so that we can understand that this is not just the DOT coming in here and solving a transportation problem, it's the DOT working with local and regional government in order to how to facilitate the next round of growth for this entire area. So it is a big decision and we want as many people involved as we can.
Well, I think it's important, as you just said also, that, you know, the people that come out, we also want them to have open minds because we know there's traffic issues and if we don't have an open mind to try to figure something out, we're never going to, we're going to be here, the next group's going to be here 30 years from now doing the same thing, so we've got to do it. So is there any other questions? Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you. I served on the MPO in my previous time here on the council and it was always very interesting to me because one of the things I wanted to do was I wanted to take the county bus down to the meeting, but because of where we were meeting and the times that we were meeting, it was impossible because there was only 30-minute headways at that point. Now you've reduced it down to 20, so I'm very happy to see that. I will tell you, there is a Facebook group called Manatee County Rants and Graves and it has to do with Manatee County traffic. So I would recommend, that would be a good place to make sure that you put information about these meetings on. I know that our PIO, Jeannie Roberts, will be happy to share information on the city Facebook page. And then you've got, the police also have a Facebook page and the fire department. So we're more than happy to partner with you all to do what we can do to encourage people to come out. I think traffic and education are two things. Everybody's been to school and everybody drives a car, so we think that automatically makes us an expert in those two topics. And I think many times it's important to share everything that you're looking at and why it's important that we look at it and what truly is for the greater good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rolfe?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. So, you know, I too was on the MPO and went through the ranks, became the chair. This issue was there. I think when you were saying community meetings and you included the MPO, but I wouldn't really include the MPO as a community meeting because from my experience, who goes there are the electeds, who serve, the staff, technicians, contractors, and to some extent, some involve citizens, but they're usually very, very high-level involved citizens that have agenda items on, you know, down in Venice or Longwood Key. So, I mean, it's really not a community meeting. I mean, if you've got an area that's going to be infected by traffic or a project, the community meeting is the community that's going to be affected, not an MPO meeting in down by the airport.
No, understood, sir. We're more illustrating, we truly want, you know, a partnership with Dave and his staff and all that to make sure we're getting all this done and it's just in one outlet, but we understand completely about definitely going deep diving into the community.
Well, and then, you know, from what we've said is though, so we had, back when the bridge was put in, we had 1,500 people in Braden Castle area, you know, object. And then so we wound up affecting a large minority population back in the 80s that was not really fair. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we don't, we don't repeat stuff of the past, that, you know, it's, it's, it's a touchy issue, there's a big problem. I personally believe there needs to be an alternative route between 301 and the interstate. It's, if you look at the traffic flows and where it's going to be, and more importantly, if you look at the development that's going on and going to go on in not only North Manatee County but Southern Hillsborough County, there's literally hundreds of thousands of acres of land that are already pre-approved, pre-approved for planned development communities. I mean, it's just, you know, just gigantic. That's going to be a whole nother metropolitan area in what is now vacant land and that traffic isn't going to, you know, we certainly don't want it coming through Bradenton. Because they're not, like you said, 31% isn't coming here. They're passing through.
And that 31% right now may be a certain number, but in 10 years will be, even if it's 25%, it'll be more.
Well, if it's 31% of 100,000 right now, that's 31%. If it's going to be half a million, 31%.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah, it's going to be a lot more even though it's still the same percentage.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, I'll send Mr. Rolfe. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. Yes, I'm on the MPO board right now too and I know you made the presentation and we've been working with you individually and we keep the MPO up to speed because, you know, there's opportunities, we want to make sure that they're not cut out so that they have input to it, but as far as outreach, no, they're not. And you've already done that, so I think they, and they're ahead of the game anyway. One thing I'll say, because I see a businessman in the audience today, Ron Allen, and he and I and others, we were at the Chamber Retreat a couple of years ago and maybe we're just too simplified or logical or businesslike, I don't know, but we all said it almost at the same time in harmony. Why aren't we doing, the people, the problem is, is not the people that want to come to Braden, it's people that wants to go through Braden from St. Pete to Sarasota. So why aren't we doing a bypass? And we already got a rail line and I said, build above it. And I think he said that's about the same time, he's like, wait a minute, we were just thinking alike, we've already got the excess purchased, we have to get the railroads, but, you know, maybe they can improve that because we also got a port up there that's booming and we got an airport that's booming, so you got point A and point B and why don't we have better rail service between the two? And then above it, cars that want to go from St. Pete to there and don't have to stop here. Again, I know I've said this a thousand times, but I wanted to mention that since I have another businessman in the audience that kind of thought that way and sometimes we think outside the box because we haven't been in politics.
And based on your discussions, we are, CSX is a private enterprise. And so we deal with them and we deal with them as a private enterprise, but we are reopening the discussions with them.
But this would enhance them because they, rail is important to that port and to get it, because you know, when them comes in off that ship, what are they going to do with the containers? They've got to transport it out and they've got to transport it out by rail or by truck. So we're going to have to, if we're going to improve, if you just can't bring all the ships in and unload them, where are they going to go with the product? They've got to have, there's only two forms of transportation, you get it from that port to the businesses and that's rail or, and there should be a combination of it because that port is going to increase, increase, increase. And to me, it's almost too logical that, and I appreciate that you that now will do that, but I think they should be a partner, not an advocate for us, not confrontational because I think it's in their benefit and maybe they can get, help us get something done and solve two problems with one. And that's looking future forward because like I said, that port is going to boom.
Absolutely. And what I was trying to illustrate is that as CSX being a private enterprise, we have to approach them in a business-like fashion. And just to add on to what you're saying, not only is the port right now freight, you know, freight conducive, but in their master plan, it's also passenger cruise ship operations and stuff like that. So you now have that connectivity directly from the airport, going through both towns, going through the conventions that are coming out to a port facility that's moving through.
And as I understand it, that has to come out of Washington, not local, this is not Tallahassee, this is Washington because they control or have at least oversight over that rail, whether they think they do or not, and they've just let the railroad, railroads were the beginning of everything in our country. So they have, they are the king, but they also, I think, will listen if it's approached right and approached in a manner that helps them also.
Correct. And that's what we're looking at them to help formulate a business plan for.
Business plan for everybody.
Correct. We're, as a private enterprise, they realize they're...
And also that can dump off, if we start getting ships, cruise ships in there, which I know has been blocked because Tampa has them, but they're full, we could probably get some ships. And then you also got a bypass, guess what? You got a bypass from the Sarasota Airport, Braden-Sarasota Airport, that goes right there, can dump off, you can get on there and dump off and... You can get on there and dump off and park and get on the cruise ship. Now, that's coming, maybe five years, I don't know, but I'd like for us to think ahead and like I said, get all that rail lines improved. I think everybody could vision that it's, it's the best way to divert this traffic outside of our city because it was built in, you know, forties, fifties, and that was the thing back then to have a, you know, locate a business along a highway so you could get more items sold. But that ideology's went out, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's DOT or MPO, but, and walkability in our downtown core is gonna, is priority, I think, for a lot of us. But I've been a little concerned about all, there's been an awful lot of crosswalks just popping up and in places that I don't know that it's appropriate because really, not every place should be where people cross. And so, I've just been concerned because they seem to just pop up. I don't know who's making the plan, but I feel like it could be adding to part of our congestion problem sometimes. And so, I don't know who gets to decide that, what's more important, but.
Can you come a little closer to the microphone, sorry?
I think I know the one example that you're bringing up.
There's about three I could bring up.
I would have to say is that if you go back and research, we have, and maybe we need to do a better effort at this, but we do notice it, we do have, you know, we coordinate with the MPO, we try to coordinate with the locals. It's just that sometimes when all these projects are going through, and that's what we're trying to do, is bring these more out and integrate them in the plan and put a little bit of thought into the big picture. So, that they, we have been making efforts to coordinate. It's just that I think they're getting lost in the shuffle. So, we are gonna make efforts to correct that and make sure that it's better known and that they better serve or there's more thought, or there's more public announcement of those coming. And so, I think that's on both sides of the table, that we need to both work on communications-wise.
And I just think understanding the logic of some of them, I mean, the confusion created by some of them, to me, makes it more dangerous on the road as a driver. And then, then it's gonna be more dangerous for a pedestrian too. So, I, I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, it's just.
No, it is a good, it's one of the things we need to coordinate and look at, like a uniform standard so we're, and location-wise, that they're identif, or, you know, that they are part of the system, not an exception, but the norm and however you create them. A lot of it, we get repetitive in how we go to work. You know, I'll raise my hand and say, you know, ninety percent of the time when I get to work, I really don't remember what I passed or what, because it's automatic, it's programmed. You do that same route every day. So, you know, you gotta condition and watch out for that or you gotta make sure that it gets integrated into those normal automatic responses, if you see what I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you. And I think you just brought up something, OJ, that, you know, you get kinda used to different things and you get used to going same day. But what I think's important, and I, and I hope that we have some more people, that if you're going to ask our community to accept something or be involved in things, it'd be nice to have that person be a part of the community because then you drive it every day and you see it every day. And I know we had an issue on First Street when they started putting in some of the curbing's in the middle and the turnarounds and all that. Well, you know, we met with some of the business owners and, and some of the staff, and it's, well, I live eighty-seven miles from here. I said, I wish you would drive this every day. And even though on a piece of paper globally, that looked great, it didn't work. Well, you know, some businesses closed because of it, because they lost that turn in or left turn when, you know, twenty-five cars can stack to turn left and there's never more than two in it. You know, so those are the common sense things that I think everybody up here's talking about that, and the community wants to see it. And then, there's an opportunity sometimes that, for the community that, well, it doesn't necessarily fit, but it fits for ninety-five percent, but we can prove the ninety-five percent are gonna be better, you know, long-term, than that twenty-five car stacked. And I've sat there for hours and seen two, you know, because it just doesn't happen.
And understood, yes, those are the points taken, is that it is, because, you know, we sit in Bartow and we're experts and we see, you know, but it's, and this is what I tell people is that, out of all these studies I do, they're very similar, but each one of them is very different in a unique way. And that's what we're trying to get better on. That's what LK and upper management at DOT has been recognizing, the uniqueness on how these roads need to integrate into each neighborhood, down to the neighborhood base.
Right. All right, thank you very much, great pres, oh, Mr. Rolfe?
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Well, this is kind of like, it was mentioned earlier and it's not, well, you mentioned the US forty-one, Fourteenth Street, you know, as part of this. And I, so, back in my years on the MPO, you know, the scenic, the Tamiami Trail Scenic Highway Program kept growing, really it was Venice and Palmetto. And it was always encouraged that we, in Bradenton, you know, tap into that, which we just haven't yet. But it's, it would basically be a fast, fast-paced move because the program already exists. Basically, as far as MPO, you know, you get into the lineup of how long it's gonna be, five, ten years. But since the Tamiami Trail Scenic Highway Program exists and our corridor is in it, it's really a pretty fast change. So, and I've always looked at it as being something that should be pursued. And of course, what we're talking about is multimodal, which, which will, now, there's a lot of people that have always been afraid, well, you go multimodal, you're moving less traffic. Is there any truth to that? Because I've always been told the traffic moves just as well. It, it, it just doesn't, doesn't seem like it does, but it does, and so.
You have to find the right balance.
Yeah.
And that's it, there's, right now, you know, Florida's plagued with a crash problem across the board. A lot of it is due to rapid growth and urbanization. People still, you know, in the seventies, I could go from Sebring and I could be gingerly jumping in the Gulf of Mexico in an hour and twenty minutes. Now, there's about a million more people in between here and there, and it now takes just an hour and fifteen minutes sometimes just to get from west Bradenton to the beach. So, what we have to do is come to a balance where we can get a homogeneous speeds for, that are applicable to the highways, like through towns. You'll find that going thirty-five miles an hour will get you there just as fast if you go forty-five in between traffic lights or fifty miles if you just go with the flow. So, that's what we're trying to do with the roads through town. And then, that's where you begin to see where people, you know, we can look at electronic or intelligent transportation solutions when people are coming over the skyway and they see a sign saying, hey, Sarasota, forty-five minutes via three oh one or thirty minutes via I seventy-five. Give them the information, give them the choice, and then allow them to start making those choices because we're also looking, like I said, harmonizing those speeds through downtown. Survivability and the best ideal speeds for pedestrian are between eighteen and twenty-five miles an hour as far as survivability, you know, so that we wanna target speeds like in that during the day. Normal speeds at night through different design features and stuff like that. You wanna try to keep it where it is, you feel like you're in town. So, you wanna go thirty-five or forty just because you're interested in all, hopefully, the development, things like that. So, those are the things that were not part of the DOT design wheel back even just five years ago. And we're still, you know, DOT's like a huge ship. So, an idea comes up, we turn the wheel, and about ten years later, it actually starts moving. But it is, it's moving a huge ship. And, you know, for eighty years, it's been high-speed, high-efficiency, high-capacity roadways. Now, it's coming back to bite us in a very negative way, i.e. serious injuries and fatalities. So, we have to, everybody has to recognize a balance between arterial streets, interstates and all that. And that, on arterial streets, no, it's not cool to go sixty miles an hour. You know, you need to go along with the speeds and be more homogeneous. But that's part of, you know, we have to work on that through design and better design and integration of these things. So, that's, we are trying to work on that.
Yes, sir.
So, the, so, to clarify my point or question is that, so, I mean, as, as a city builder, I know that going, tapping into the scenic highway program and going multimodal is good for the community. It, it's good for the revitalization.
Yes, sir.
So, so, no, so that's good. So, but traffic-wise, as, you know, you know, your, your situation of moving cars, does it, does it, does it help, hurt, or neutral?
Again, it's balancing it.
Right.
It's making it where it works for everybody. And so, some people give up, drivers slow down a little bit, increases that walkability and increases that mobility. Those are the goals we're trying to strive for. And when you do that, then the overall net throughput on that road is basically not affected.
And that's what I've always been told, is it won't be affected, you just think it, it's in your, it's in your mind.
We're gonna be looking at that on the segment of US forty-one down by the airport. You may have heard that we have a safety project that's going through their medians and stuff like that. Well, that's only the first step. Because that is part of the scenic highway, we've been had a lot of questions about the interconnectivity of the sidewalks and also, you know, landscaping and stuff like that. So, we're putting in as much as we can without having to do a formal study on it, PDNE, i.e. for federal funding because there is right-of-way involved. So, we're trying to complete as much of the sidewalk. Our task in part of these jobs with the CMAS, the US forty-one, is to follow up with that, finish off all of those facilities, look at that landscaping and see how we can enhance that and get that speed limit down and promote all that intermodalism in there because that's one of the high emphasis areas because of the universities and all that, and all the other things associated with that. So, yes, we are gonna try to demonstrate that. And also with the transit, we're working with the MPO to get that headways consistently at twenty minutes so that you know at ten past the hour, thirty past the hour, and ten before the hour, that there's gonna be a bus there on a constant thing so that people can begin to rely and feel more comfortable using it. So, it does equal out the throughput, it just changes the mode.
I think she had something, I have another.
I'll add real quick, on, on the CMAS project, we talked about the measures of effectiveness. One of the first things we wanna do is find out what are the current travel times to the corridor? So, we have that, so we wanna show people, this is what, if you're driving from point A to point B, this is kinda your average speed through the corridor, your time, I guess, not speed, but time to get through the corridor. If you're taking the bus, this is the time it takes you to get to the corridor. And then, as we develop those implementation strategies, we'll look at through modeling, what will the time be? So, we'll have that information to present as we move through the project.
Okay, so, last question. And so, this is something, like I said, it's been pushed as, you know, through MPO. And I went through the MPO school, so I understood what I was doing. It's the, so, this has been out there for a long time. I've been told, you're late to the game, you're late, you're late, late. Is it something we should, is it part of, does it have to be part of this? Is it something we should be looking at? I've been told that we should be taking advantage of this just because the program's already sitting there, the funds are already sitting there and everything.
No, we are taking advantage, we're working.
No, no, us, us, we, us, the city.
Yes, I mean, yes, sir, and that's part of the setup of Braden and Palmetto, the connector.
Please come closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. Is to be able to come up with essentially a transportation master plan for your downtown. The city of Sarasota did it back in nineteen ninety-nine, and that's the result of you see the roundabouts being built as you come from downtown upward. And in the current process now, is that as we move forward and we start working on those projects and implementing, as we come up with a formalized list linking all of those things from the MPO formally through the NEPA process, which is what this Braden and Palmetto process wants to do, is that then these projects are, have the ability to pop out faster and they're more eligible for different funding sources. So, yes, to answer your question, that's what we're trying to accomplish here where we can take advantage of that and work with the staff and see what kind of funding. That's what I was saying with Ellie Com Park, is that we heard there's an interest in trying to expand the access and availability to it and looking at grant funding, so we wanna be a part of that.
Well, I think to Mr. Rolfe's point, and you brought up about what Sarasota did, county and city with the roundabouts, is in years back, people, oh, roundabout slows things down.
Oh, yeah.
Now, when you're looking at Sarasota County, if you hear anything at the MPO meetings as we do now, they rave about the roundabouts and the traffic crashes. There may be the same number of crashes, but they're a lot less fatal or a lot less injuries. And so, and it may not be the same, but it, you know, numbers are the same, but the volume is twice as much. So, it looks good that way. So, I think we appreciate it, it's kinda, it was a great presentation, timing-wise, but we know there's gonna be more and we're very happy to be going through this next step. Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Next up, we have Business Flair presentation.
Welcome.
Hello. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city administrator, my name is Peter Altman. I'm with Business Flair. And we are very proud to be able to present the first phase of our work with the city, which is our economic base overview. Let me make sure that I have the right. Yes, so, Business Flair produces economic base analysis for Bradenton, and we use what we call key drivers. So, this first slide just shows what will be a common theme throughout the work that we do, looking at the drivers of economic equity, economic development, and for the future and resilience of the city. Capital, land, labor, markets, the city's regulations, and the quality of life of Bradenton are all drivers of economic success to the city. And so, we, in our analysis of this database, have done a point-in-time study for that. This slide that you see here is one of twelve slides that we'll show you today. And there are fifty-four slides in the report, which has been presented in its electronic form and should be distributed to you and the members of staff. So, I'd like to just say on the outset that, given the time constraints of the meeting, the breadth of the information within it, we will do a printed version of this probably within the end of the week. So, anything we learned today or any corrections, this will be our opportunity to make those final. But this is giving you a taste really of the report. And so, our approach to the economic development is to look at, at these different climate themes. I'm not gonna read this, but you can see the headings that lead to the success factors and depends on the appropriate balance, as has been said before, of these success factors, looking at your community, its connections, its sense of itself, and its location. The opportunity areas will be the next stage of our work. And so, we look to find opportunities that will preserve your charm and move through exposing, investing in these networks, as just been talked about, for multimodal purposes, and capitalizing on the beneficial results of our study. This is a slide that shows citywide job trends and shows that healthcare, the construction industry, and transportation and warehousing have all seen increases in employment. So, we look at the workforce, the number of jobs in the region, the average earnings per worker for the region. And for the city, folks who live here, sixty-four thousand dollars being the average earnings per worker. We also look at these commuting statistics, that's kinda paralleling the discussion before, how do people come and go? Most people take about fifteen to twenty-four minutes to get into work in Bradenton with this slide. But the folks who live here, who work and commute outside of Bradenton, take longer to get to work as they work in markets of St. Petersburg and Tampa, which, which kind of is informative, with as low uses of bicycles and walking and of course, of using transit. And that's just where you are right now. Markets, the markets indicate, for example, median age. Forty-five-year-old median age is below Manatee County's, which is closer to forty-nine. But it's above St. Petersburg, which has got youth, which was not the circumstances when I was growing up. But now, it has, it has changed as, as places do over time. The average household size in the city is two-point-three residents per house, your daytime population you're aware of, and your median home value, as was reflected at the time of this report. Might be a good point for me to make too, that one of our deliverables is to continue to update this report. And so, we keep these analysis live on a marrow whiteboard. So, at any point in time, whether it's staff or a member of the council or a member of the CRA who shares in this product, can ask us a question and we can update and dive in a little deeper. One of the elements of our research produces something called tapestry segments you may be familiar with. Citywide retirement communities represent the largest of the tapestries of the personality types, which really translates to the shopping habits. Where do people go, what do they buy, what are their lifestyles? The retirement community is big as, as one would expect, and of course, what's happening right now is this great migration of wealth from the north and other places to Florida and to places that folks want to live. So, retirement communities may not have the income, but oftentimes they have the balance sheet and the assets, which helps to bring capital to the city and to the region. Midlife constants is another type of household that is significant here. The median income is a little less, households hot size a little more. And these tapestries are within the report, so again, without spending time today, giving you a chance to review the report, come up with questions. This is in effect sort of a teaser of what we have inside. I mentioned that the CRA districts are also partners in this project, this economic evaluation project. And so, I think it's interesting to see this slide. Bradenton CRA district has the less population and households, but it also has the lowest average household size, the highest median age, the highest income, and beyond that, the most expensive mortgages. And 51% of the population is 57 or older. So, the, the good news, if we have walkability and the ability to utilize the downtown in the areas closest to the Bradenton CRA district, you've got a good population, that's, that's already resident of that. The central CRA district alternatively has the highest population, the highest household, and the lowest percentage of elderly, and the highest percentage of youth, and the largest average household, household size. So, the central CRA district holds the youngest future employable segment of your community. Didn't mean to skip the 14th one, but it's in the middle. It also doesn't have the income levels of the other two, and it is certainly worthy of discussion, which we'll revisit this during the CRA meeting and talk in more detail about that. Quality of life has become even more prominent, as you all have heard, I'm sure, over the past years, particularly in the post-COVID time, when the labor market has shifted to becoming more dominant in determining where they want to live, and the work from home has become such a larger portion of the working, workforce. That being said, I've attended a number of luncheons from your economic development groups and other predictors, League of Cities and Florida Redevelopment Association. Everyone is in agreement that the quality of life that you put forth is going to attract the labor market of the future, and it also is going to enhance the quality of life for the folks that already live here and provide a better chance to see long-term sustainability. In the downtown breakaway, the, this is placer data, and this is data that comes from a large number of the telephone apps that allow to be tracked. So, the data is incredible. The, the good news is that that is anonymous, that you don't know who the people are, but you know who comes here, whether they worked here, what they, what stores that they go to before they left. This is the kind of data that shopping centers have always used to try to identify the markets, and we have that data, which makes our firm pretty unique in, in our arena. So, this data here is showing with the, the chart that you have a big lunch crowd and you have a big dinner crowd. You might not have needed all of the fancy data to tell you that if you tried to get to eat or stop at your restaurants downtown. But it also shows on the bottom which days of the week and where the traffic is. So, on a daily basis, a good lunch and dinner crowd, but on a weekend basis primarily. Also, it indicates the average stay time, so once they're tracked that you're in that geofenced area, you're in the downtown, how long did you stay there? And interestingly, the, the average stay time is either between 15 and a half hour that people come into town, or else it is more than two and a half hours. So, that, I guess, helps keep them here while they're waiting for their table, or the fact that they have come to, to do the walk on the river or spend some time in your city. We can tell from that as well, how far they came, there are additional slides that are in the presentation. And as, as interesting as the, as the data is, is you continue to go deeper and learn more. The key takeaway from the foot traffic analysis for this one particular example in the Village of the Arts is that peak visits were between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. on the evenings. And of course, again, the most visited days are Fridays and Saturdays, and the trade area coverage ranges from three to seven miles. So, this is still a pretty localized hidden gem that gives us a little bit of information. Speaking of hidden gems, the, the next steps for us would be to review opportunity sites for city-owned parcels and fitment, what, what is appropriate, what kind of revenue can be generated? What are the opportunities for city-owned sites? We'd like to highlight redevelopment processes and benefits, and we believe additional research is, is appropriate to look at the aging conditions of the existing buildings and the historical landmark, landmarks, to find those hidden gems, and to conduct more in-depth informative workshops, which, which sort of dovetails with the conversation of reaching out to the community to both the stakeholders as well as the average citizen on the street. I am doing my best to keep this as, stay out of the rabbit holes I generally run into, and so, I would say that that would complete my presentation today. We've appreciated working for you and look forward to continuing with our.
Any questions, Mr. Roth?
Thank you. Yeah, Peter, so, is, is, is there information, the data you got, is, is it from, I, I know you use those phone apps. Is that where it's coming from, or is there a census or statistics you're getting somewhere? Do you compile different pieces of info? I'll tell you why I'm questioning this, two, two of the things I saw was you had the average family income at 52, which sounds a little high from everything I've always seen. And then, the average home price is 250, which we know that's not.
Low.
Where it's at anymore. But, but beginning to the home, because even with the values, the, the income values, I mean, when you went into the CRAs, they were in the 30s. So, how do, how do we get up to 52? Is that, is that visitors or?
Well, your, your CRAs by definition are your most impacted areas, so if that's answering your question, I'm not.
No, well, I guess, I guess according to the latest stats, I mean, we've always been at about 42,000 average family income, and it's, you've got it 52, correct? Is it, so, it's gone up 10,000? I mean, where's your data coming from?
Well, that's a good question, and I, and let me say that we're getting data from ESRI, which has a business analyst online tool, which allows you to sort of geofence and identify issues. The American Community Survey, which part of our process is CoStar, which is, helps with real estate. The Economic Modeling Specialists International, which is MC. Placer, which is the data from the cell phones and other sources. So, to answer your question, I'll get you the answer to that, how current it is, what update it is, and how what seem to be these anomalies can exist. If you, as example, we were talking last night to, to an advisory group who was asking some questions, which, which are good questions, which I didn't have the answer to. So, I think part of our ongoing process is to identify those questions, get those answers to you.
Okay.
Correctly, otherwise, I'm going to be, you know, guessing because I don't know the answer to that right now.
Well, the home values are definitely low at this point.
Mr. Perry, did you have something to that?
Just briefly, I had the same questions regarding the median household income when I first looked at the 53 slides that took about five hours to digest with Katerina and I and Mr. Crowder, who's kind of the analytics guy, and, and Peter, and we had these discussions. They just kind of stuck out regarding the home value and the median income as being.
Right.
Somewhat off. I, I think the answer is, to a certain extent, some of the, the data sources.
Mr. Perry, can you pull your microphone?
Of course. Some of the data sources, Councilor Mayor, reference area codes and, and other factors that have to be normalized. They're general numbers, and you can extrapolate from there, but you probably have to run some linear modeling to get precision into those numbers. But they're a good benchmark and a good start, in my opinion.
All right, we have Mr. Sanders and then Mrs. Barnaby.
I didn't hear it, if I did, I apologize. What's the, in the city of Bradenton, what is the age groups that you identified and what was the percentage? In other words, I didn't know if you did 20, 30, 40, did, did you have that in here?
Well.
In other words, if I ask you how many people are above 50, what percentage would that be? And I don't, maybe that, maybe you didn't cut that off at 50, maybe you cut it up, I don't know where you're.
Well, as example, and I think this is something anyone in the audience or anyone here can do, if you go on the United States Postal Service and you look up everyday direct mail, they have a tool which you can actually drill into the individual routes, not just the zip codes. And as you look in that tool, and you can see how, if you're targeting in a marketing sense who you want to reach out to, you might have 50% of the households that has somebody that's 18 in them, but they may also have an older person. So, you have to look to the different sources to understand the, the dynamics of that. Those questions are questions I, as has been mentioned by Mr. Perry, our analytics team who presents this, I want them to be able to give you that sense about household income and about those questions.
Okay, but so, how do I know who I'm serving? What, what's our age population? What's, how many young people we have here? And again, you have to identify that by whatever age category, but say you divide it in three age categories, you divide it in the young, intermediate, and old, and I don't know where you'd want to do that. What's our, what's our demographics in our city?
So, that, that goes back to, you can look at it from the other end, which is the spending patterns which identify us. So, you know, when you look at the tapestries, for example, your largest demographic, the biggest group of people you have are retirees, and then beyond that, depending.
I saw that, that was 15.6%, and the median 9.8, and the young was 9.4, but that only adds up to about 40%. So, where's the other 60%?
Mayor, if I could take a stab, but that centennial data status is compiled by the US Census Department every 10 years, includes all the demographic and analytics as it relates to age. If you're wondering who is in your particular ward, you'd have to do some math, but you could probably figure it out that way. You're talking about kids under probably 12, they're not counted in this data, or other folks. Out of the 54 slides, it gets more granular if you look at it. You'll still probably have some questions, quite honestly, and they're good questions, don't get me wrong. But this, these seven slides basically encapsulate generalizations about certain tapestries, where they are, who they are, what they do, that type of thing. So, we could do a workshop in this, and, and again, five hours, Katerina and I still had a lot of questions, as I would imagine you would too. But that's the way analytics works, and, and we, it's a good start. It's, it's used for benchmarking purposes, it's used for planning, and it's used for economic development and community development. So, I didn't want to make this a lengthy question and answer, but I did want to give a snapshot to council, and I think we've done that thus far.
And Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you. Mr. Altman, I'm just wondering, when will we, when will we be able to have paper copies of this? Because some of the information, when it shows up on the screen and it shows up on these screens here, it's, it's kind of difficult to see, but it would be, it would be helpful to have paper copies or, or an email thing that I could pull up and then expand.
We, we will be giving you printed bound copy, and I could have it to you by Friday. I wanted to know if there was anything that really stuck out that was needed, and I know you haven't had a chance to look through everything. You just got your electronic copy last night, but it's there in the public's records now. One example of something I want to change, one of the slides talks about your, your, your neighborhood, neighboring counties and how much population is in them. And it says adjacent counties. Well, it didn't, did not include Pinellas, so I want to put Pinellas in because that's one of your closest connections in terms of the job market, and there's a million people who live there. So, that's one slide that I, I wanted to change. If there's any other slides or information that anyone has that needs to be done, the more questions, the longer it takes. We want to put this thing to rest and then get it there and then say, okay, as we go along, because we'll be updating this on a quarterly basis according to our agreement while we work with the city in general. And, you know, I just want to say that, as I have said it before, the $50 million capital improvement plan that you have, the ability to work in harmony with your infrastructure and your public works projects with an economic eye on it, as you've got the transportation stuff going. It's, it's a complex issue, but as I think I heard you all discussing, it's important that all of those things get merged in. As example, one of our opportunities discussed is, is a ferry, the ability to connect Palmetto and downtown Bradenton in a way that helps to attract those people who might go to conferences and also to create some tourism. So, there's a lot of ideas, once again, to Mr. Perry's comments and from my own perception of the time that you all put in on your meetings without breaks or lunches. I just wanted to say, here's the delivery of it, Friday we'll get you the copy, and you can have that hard copy.
And, and your mission, what, what we hired you to do is basically to look at our downtown and our CRA areas.
Well, that's, that's true, but at the same token, the success of the CRA areas has a lot to do with the, what was again talked about before, the connectivity, which, which goes beyond the city's limits, and the ability for the CRA to be a partner with the general fund of the administrator in jiving up this, this, you know, massive influx of revenue that you've got from the American Rescue Act, plus, you know, from your 50-some million dollars in encumbered reserves, some spending of that to support not only the projects that are listed, but also to make yourself available for many of the matching grants that are out there because money is flowing from all directions. And, and I, I think when I was first introduced by Mr. Perry, that's something else to say, we keep an eye out and try to work with DOT, with the city, with the CRAs to see what, what grant funding is out there and what level is it, what's the probability of success? Because some of the resiliency funds are so, so much that you're able to get them, and I, I believe that you've already experienced some of that, the benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, and appreciate it, and it's meeting with you the other day, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I just wanted to do one thing. Chairman Van Austinbridge from the County Commission had come in during our presentations there, so welcome. And also, as usual, most times, a former Councilman Gallo is here, so we welcome both of you. Mrs. Melton, I believe we're at citizen comment? All right, just a reminder, citizen comment will be accepted at this time on any non-agenda items. Comments will be accepted on the public hearing and agenda items at the appropriate time. So, I have a couple of cards, and then also, we have one card that's on the consent agenda. So, what we'll do is we'll go to both cards that are the yellow cards, citizen comment, and then we'll ask for the consent agenda item person to come up and talk before the consent agenda. So, at this time, we'll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would you allow the council to question citizens' comments?
At the appropriate, after their.
After each?
No, at the end of citizen comment, we'll.
At the end of citizen comment, then we can, okay, thank you.
Yes. So, first, we have Kimla Morrell. Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Kimla Morrell, my address is 521 Bradenton, 521 12th Ave. I am a citizen of 12th Ave, which 12th Ave was a big problem with drugs. I am a citizen of 12th Ave, which 12th Ave was a big problem with drugs, prostitution, crime, all of that stuff. I am here today to say, first of all, thank you, Jesus, and thank you all for hearing us. Thank you, Mayor, thank you Vice Mayor, Chief Bevan, and all of you guys. I mean, 12th Ave is Q quiet, which is, you know, knock on wood, yes, but your efforts have helped us, listening to us. We have some happy residents. Thank you. We are, thank you for your continued efforts. The Bradenton Police Department, they're coming together in the community. I have a resource center where they're going to have meetings monthly where we can keep this going, keep the citizens safe. Our children are much safer. We can sit outside and not hear of this cursing and seeing prostitution and drugs. Thank you. Okay? I want to give you guys your props. Thank you so much. All right?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. All right. Next, we have Rodney Jones, who's come forward. You have three minutes. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Just a point of clarity, because I continue to struggle with the public-
Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Rodney Jones, 213 16th Avenue. Before I start a point of clarity, I thought we were going by policy, and I see you hired people come up and put on these long presentations, and I thought presentations were limited to 10 minutes. And also, the fact that citizens only get three minutes and they don't get the engagement of the council. We pay you guys, but we, you guys don't get answers, questions, and if you go over the three minutes, you get arrested. I just saw everybody go over the 10 minute. I think I heard the buzzer. You didn't make any effort to stop them. There was active engagement, so I'm not understanding why there's this huge disparity, especially when some blacks come up and complain about corruption and misconduct, how we ran off, and then others get to go over as long as they want to, and there's this active engagement. I'm confused. So, if you want to clear that up, Mayor, why certain portions of are given more time and get extended time and the citizens do not?
You're within your three minutes. Please continue.
Okay. Well, we got a problem. We got a recent report from the Police Benevolent Association that says that you have corruption in the midst of Bradenton Police Department, including your chief. 56% of officers out of 102 that are members of the PBA, they responded. The report is scathing. It says, it counts, it says that the officers here at the Bradenton Police Department, in conjunction with the public, are saying that there's a special unit here. It's not all of the officers. I agree with Ms. Kimla. Some of them are doing a wonderful job, but you've got a unit here that has wreaked havoc on this community for decades. We've been complaining. I found evidence of perjury in court, misconduct. I brought information here to you now for three years, like Moses going to Pharaoh, trying to get you to do something about the corruption within the department, and now you've got 56% of your officers, which is over 50 police officers, now saying that there's corruption within the department. I've been down here, I've been arrested for trying to complain about it. I'm currently on probation now, and Gene, you have to do something, man. I mean, you have to show some form of leadership. You can't just keep kicking it down the road like your former predecessor did, Mayor Wayne Poston. You just can't keep doing it. You know, the evidence is there. We prevented clear evidence of the misconduct within the police department, and you've done nothing. And it's a travesty, and what you're going to do is you're going to get somebody hurt out here, because this is the problem that black communities have. You ask us to come down here. You ask us to file the complaints. We file the complaints, and then your chief of police throws the investigations and leaves all the information out from the black community, and then finds, finds no findings. We make complaints on her, and you, in your infinite wisdom, you allow the same person that we made the complaint on to do the investigation on themselves and didn't find no findings. That's unprecedented. That's not the way equitable organizations handle themselves. You got to do something, man. You look bad, you're running the city into the ground, and you've destroyed the morale in that police department. 94% of those, can I have extra time?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, your three minutes is up.
May I have extra time, please?
Yes, sir, your three minutes is up. Thank you. I have no other citizen comments at this time, but I would like to make a statement. And I believe the accusations that have been made have no merit, and as we would do with any officer within the agency, a review would be completed to ensure there are no violations and to be transparent. I have requested an independent review of the anonymous statements to be conducted by the FDLE in order, in order to determine if an investigation is warranted. This appears to me just to be another distraction to the city and to the Bradenton Police Department to try to deter them and the chief from providing quality service to our community. And we will continue to do what's right when it comes into us, and other things that have been brought up in my tenure have been asked and answered, and this one is actually something that I was glad to get, because I do believe that as this goes forward, we will hopefully get some resolve from the FDLE next week. So, thank you, and any council comments? All right, hearing none?
No.
Oh, no. I looked, and you didn't raise your hand. Mr. Sanders?
No, I got a lot of comments. Thank you. This report binded, just came to council this morning, right? Does anybody get this before? I got it last week.
I did.
Did anybody else?
I think it was.
That's question number one. Police Department told me this was available to the council, and I'm sure the mayor saw it.
I have an electronic report.
You, but you, but you got this, and you did not tell us as counsel.
Right, but it's not my responsibility to share something from a PBA.
It is in the charter, your responsibility to report any indiscretions of any department-
And the chief, the chief did meet with the council people.
Not about this?
Yes.
No, that's not true.
That was the first presentation.
No. Matter of fact, I met with the chief on other issues, and she walked out, stormed out. No, I'm not finished.
No, but I would like to ask Mr. Rudesel.
Well, you can ask Mr. Rudesel, but that's what it says in the charter.
Mr. Sanders, we are in negotiations with the police union at this time. Is some of this appropriate? I just want to make sure that if we're starting to get into parts that we shouldn't be talking about.
I would say a couple of things. First of all, we, we are in the midst of those negotiations, so we need to be careful about the things that we're saying and putting on the record. But secondly, you know, as with any type of allegation, we wait for the investigation to occur and for, you know, the findings to be made before anything is brought forward for any type of action, and it is my understanding that that is what is occurring as it relates to these claims that were made in the, in the PBA report.
Mr. Rudesel, these claims have been going on for years. Some of them are never solved. They always get investigated with no conclusion. I've asked for conclusions, I don't get them, and I'm very concerned. This report is scathing. It has nothing to do with the union contract. That's about money, retirement, those types of things. These are allegations of misdeeds by primarily the management of our PD. These are rank-and-file people, some of them with 20 years' experience, are complaining about our chief and the people that surround her, and these are very, very serious allegations. And to have the FDLE investigate, already says, you know, there's a problem, or you wouldn't have them to investigate, because that's the first I've heard of it, is that right five seconds ago. So, you, you've already determined that there's cause to look into this, but is there cause? I don't know why you're getting up. I'm not asking you a question.
Mr. Sanders, please, if you-
Please, I, please, let, let me finish.
You just said something, so let me finish.
Well, I didn't ask a question.
The reason that I had FDLE get involved is because it also exonerates people, so there's an opportunity-
Well, yeah, I know, we always want to talk about the exoneration, but I, I don't think there's a, you know what? This is, this is one of the worst reports I think I've ever seen.
And it-
And you know what? And not that I get these reports, but I can watch TV and see that this is, this is way, way, way. Let me ask you another question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Have you, have you used the police department to investigate anybody?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not? So, if I, if I gave you evidence that there was, would you resign?
What?
Sir, you're going way out of the scope of-
Just, just, just answer my question.
Mr. Perry, I'd like to call on Mr. Perry at this time.
Well, I do have evidence that you've done that.
And you're incorrect, so.
No, I'm not incorrect. I asked the chief about that, she denied, declined it, and so, I think you're, I think you're abuse of power.
You, you like to throw innuendos out-
No, I'm not throwing innuendos. I got proof.
Three and a half years.
Would you like to see proof?
Well, bring it to the proper authorities, Mr. Perry.
Bring it to our proper authorities?
Mr. Perry.
I will do that, but I'm bringing it to you as the-
Well, you like to throw innuendos out.
That's not innuendos, those are facts.
Yes, it is.
No, it is not.
There is no fact in that.
There is fact, I've got it.
Mr. Sanders?
I have it.
Well, then if you have the smoking gun, bring it on.
I bring it on, okay? Then, then you'll, then you admit that you use your office.
I have not used the office-
Yes, you have.
-for anything appropriate.
Yes, you have.
Uh, Mr. Perry?
Mayor, I believe the, the report of corruption and the longstanding allegations were part
of a union survey.
Yeah.
They came out at the PBA, the Police Benevolent-
Mr. Perry, stay by the microphone for us.
The Police Benevolent Association at the last negotiation. The quality of those reports are questionable. Many people said, no, I know you can shake your head as much as you want, because you know I'm here every day engaged.
I'll shake my head.
I'm wrong. That's good, but I'm going to have the opportunity to say what I have to say.
Well, I didn't ask you to do that.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to.
Mr. Sanders?
I'm not engaging in a give and take.
Come on, let's get the truth out.
You're not going to cross-examine me, I'm going to give my presentation.
Well, I don't know why I shouldn't cross-examine you, you're an employee of us.
Okay, so the PBA, getting back to that.
You had several instances like this.
Mayor, I'm going to ask you to, to basically advise council not to interrupt me.
Please, Mr. Perry, let him finish.
PBA, basically, there are several questions surrounding the quality of that survey. We're in union negotiations. When I, when I ran the state police as the number two, when I ran the Department of Corrections, yeah, I know, because you've done all these things, over your 35 years.
Yeah.
Yep. It was commonplace.
I take that as a slanderous statement.
Quite honestly, it was commonplace to have these surveys come out. Morale is low. Leadership is poor. This has happened. The nature of these allegations are particularly troubling to me, because they make allegations against the chief, the leadership of that department, the authority of that department, and some of the allegations, the nature of them, is that they're special treatment. There's special treatment to females, there's special treatment to people of color. It seems to me that some of these allegations, if, if there is encouragement to those groups to apply, to promote, to educate, that, that's the nature of it, that those are positive things. We live in 2022. The good old boy network of the past, it, it, it's gone, and, and the reality is, is that a good department is diversified. As I gave the presentation about my staff, we have diversity of, of ethnicity, of gender, of age, probably religious affiliation, sexual preference, and everything else. So, I'm troubled by these things, and I would be very, very careful about the sensitivities of how I characterize these if I was an elected public official, and frankly, as a voting member and taxpayer of this community, I would expect more responsibility, not as the city administrator, and to come up there and make bold-faced allegations.
These are not allegations, these are facts.
Mr. Sanders, please.
To that extent, to that extent, the matters are being reviewed, I would imagine that those individuals that purveyed that and advanced that, particularly if they were in leadership, that they were trained in Title VII of the Civil Rights Act and employment, and understand those goals of, of diversity and fairness and promotion of those as objectives of management, governance, and organization are important. So, we can mischaracterize things as much as we want, and we can use them and exploit them for benefit in our labor negotiations, but the reality is, is that at the end of the day, they'll be reviewed and they'll be handled and managed. Politicized, that happens someplace else, other than my professional management.
Yeah, right. Well, I wasn't even finished before you gave him time, but I've never finished, I had the floor.
Please, is there any other?
Why didn't, I'm not allowed to finish my statement?
You've made accusations.
No, I didn't make accusations, and I've got facts if you want to see them. If you'd like, I can go get them.
We're going to, we're going to move on on the agenda at this time.
Well, I'd like to say, I'm not finished, and I like to have, I like to have time. I'm, I'm serious, I like to have time.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Well, where we going now? Another meeting, another closed-door meeting? What, what happened to the last closed-door meeting that?
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
We do have one citizen comment on a consent agenda, so at this time, I'd like to call Shay Hockenberry, is it? Ma'am, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes for the record.
My name is Shay Hockenberry. My address is 7515 27th Avenue West in Bradenton, Florida, and I'm here representing the landowner, the landowner at 5004 State Road 64, which is the subject of the special use permit on the consent agenda item J. I'm here today to ask you to delay taking any action on the final order, as I feel you guys at the public hearing were asking specific questions, so you could make informed decisions on that special use permit, and I felt like, felt like some of the answers fell short. Representing the landowner, we didn't feel the need to come to the public hearing because there was virtually no opposition. Your staff had recommended, the PMZ board had recommended it, and it was less than .0001% of the population, only three people came. Normally, when we have opposition, there's hundreds of people. I've come before several of you at MPO boards and Citizens Advisory Committee where hundreds of people have, have opposed things, and in this case, we didn't have it. So, we thought that Mrs. Schwartz presented the, the facts of the special use permit, and you guys had asked questions, Mr. Roth, as to what was your purview in this situation to approve or deny the permit, and she referred to 3.3.2 that stated there are reasons for approval or, or denial of a special use permit, and she read each one of them, and this applicant has either met or exceeded every one of those. So, we were shocked because your staff, your professional, highly educated, highly experienced staff, had recommended it and said that it had met all of the requirements. So, like I said, this property, we've owned it for almost nine years. We've been very selective in the buyers that, that we sell these properties to. We hold them for long periods of time until the right use comes along. The applicant and their engineer, I think, spoke to, as well as Mrs. Schwartz, that this could be a 24-hour McDonald's or Taco Bell that would be highly negatively impact the residential neighborhood behind it. It'd be 24 hours. The noise of McDonald's is far higher than this particular business, so that would not even have to come before this committee. We could do that on it and get a lot more money for the property, but that wasn't our goal here. We try to be very friendly to the neighbors, and like I said, in this particular case, went above and beyond. Even at the PMZ meeting, they came up with two additional stipulations, and we honored those. So, I just would like to ask you, before you make a decision based on the speculative comments of three people who didn't want noise affecting them when they're out by their pool, that you look at the jobs this will create, that you look at the 55,902 other residents in the city of Bradenton, the jobs this is going to bring, the tax revenue it will bring, and delay this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that's the only other card I have, so I mean, it's, we're going to go to consent agenda, or did you want to?
Well, I just wanted to comment, because we did receive an email from this individual, and I just wanted to explain, because I think the, the point was missed on my, well, my, my name was used, my comments were used. I look at, I do-
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Rudesel.
Yeah, let me just, before we, before we get into any discussion, you know, this was a quasi-judicial item. There was a public hearing, and the city council made their decision at that time the vote was taken. The item that is on the agenda for today is the final order, which is just the memorialization of what has already occurred. So, to the extent that the council wants to reconsider that action, that, that could could be done today, but if that were to occur, we would schedule a new public hearing with advertised notice, um, before engaging in any discussion on the merits of the application. So I just wanna make sure, I think it's fine if you wanna, if you wanna clarify.
No, should I make my comment after, then? 'Cause that's, I, I just wanted, since I was mentioned in, in, in a public, uh, record, I, I just wanna explain my-
Yes, I think, I think that'd be fine. I just wanna make sure that we're not engaging-
I can do it later.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're not engaging in, in, we're not gonna engage in discussion on the merits of that, of that petition.
Good, after we vote.
All right. All right, so, um, at this time, Ms. Melton?
Yes, the CRA executive director requested item G be pulled.
Okay.
And item A was pulled before the meeting, so we are requesting approval of items B through F.
I have some items to be pulled.
And H through T.
Okay, so we know that A and G are already pulled, and then, Mr. Sanders, do you have a motion?
Yes, I have, have a motion to, uh, uh, approve the agenda with the exceptions of B, D, E, F, H, M, and T.
Is that M or N?
M, like in Mary.
Mary.
B, D, F, and what?
B, D, E, F, H, M, T.
Okay, is a motion to approve?
I'm seconding that.
They left approved.
I'm, I'll second that, but I also wanted to pull S.
Hold on there.
Which one did she, which one did you say?
I'm having a difficult time, people.
S, as in Sam? Okay.
So you wanna pull S?
There's anything left.
But, but Mr. Sanders' motion did not include-
I'll amend the motion to put that in.
So?
So it'd be, I want B, D, E, F, H, M, T, and S by Mr. Roth, and I think R A G was, or another one was right-pulled by executive director, uh-
Did you say T as well?
T, like in Tom.
Is that on your agenda? I don't have a T on my agenda.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there's a T.
Public revised, um, budget adjustment.
Okay, yep, that's right. All right, so, all right, so-
I know that sounds like a lot, but some of these are just questions that I had that, that didn't get answered before this meeting.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Sanders, and we added S. So B, D, E, F, M, T, and S. That's correct, Mr. Sanders?
H.
Uh, H was in there.
H, M, T, S. So there's eight items that are being pulled.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
May I just clarify? The motion is to approve item C, I, J, K, L, and N through R.
Yes.
Did you, just, did you say E?
No. No.
Okay, I, I didn't hear you.
She didn't say E, okay.
Okay.
And N through R, he said, okay. And the second by Mr. Roth?
Yep.
Okay, um, hold on a second. Any other discussion? Start the vote in Ward Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
And four?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Sanders?
Item B is, um, the newly created position of a police legal advisor, administrative services assistant director, is to be defined, designated, included in the senior management class for Florida state retirement purposes. I was not aware, at a newly created position for police legal advisor slash administrative services assistant director, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm unaware of that position. I'd like to have an explanation of, of how that came about and what, what's the, what's the purpose?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, that, uh, the position actually of, of police legal advisor has been something that we've had for several years now, however, on a contractual basis. That's something you all actually see and, um, approve or at least review each month. As you know, um, I've had a retirement and a resignation of my two assistant chiefs, and, um, I felt the need from an operational and management standpoint to not only maintain the police legal advisor status, but to also, um, add additional responsibilities and was able to, um, uh, upgrade that position to a full-time position. That position will not only provide police legal services, and when I say police, um, he also serves on the nuisance abatement board. He serves with the, um, Citizens Advisory Committee, um, also does our, something you've been seeing a lot in the paper, our red flag, um, you know, does all of the, um, RPO orders, forfeiture procedures, whatnot. From the administrative, um, services perspective, um, he's gonna be utilized to help provide guidance and leadership, both in OPS, um, and also within the, the budget framework. And so this isn't much of a increase in cost to the city because some of his salary will still be covered by forfeiture seizure funding, which we are statutorily allowed to do because of a portion of his work being dedicated towards that endeavor. I think maybe the difference in, um, cost is for benefits and approximately maybe, maybe fifteen thousand dollars, um, in salary.
Uh, questions? So who, who were this person, this is, this is the, Mr. Disco, the attorney?
Yes, sir.
The attorney's been, how long has he been attorney for the police department?
Uh, he's been providing attorney services for, I don't know, maybe, maybe, maybe three, four years?
Three, four years? And, uh, would he report to you, or is this says administrative services assistant director? Is that part of the city, or is that part of the?
It's part of the police department.
So there's no, he's not part of the, um, administrative, uh, section under Mr. Perry?
No, sir.
It's totally within you. So you're just saying it's a creative position, legal advisor, administrative service, what's administrative services assistant?
I have-
Assistant director? Who's the director?
I, so I have an administrative services section within the police department. I have, um, patrol, uh, operations, patrol support, and administrative services.
So you're the-
I am the director.
You're the director?
Yes.
Police chief and the director?
Well, I'm, I am a director as the police chief.
All right. So this is a fifteen thousand dollar increase in pay?
Roughly, I'd, I'd have to get the exact numbers.
All right, well, uh, we need to know.
Well, it's in my budget. It's, it's captured in the budget.
Wait a minute, no, it's the city taxpayer budget, not your budget.
Okay. It's in the police department budget.
Uh, well, but that's another issue. I don't, you wanna discuss that? This, the council approves all budgets. It's not yours just to run with and do as you please after you get the money. You, you've got about a twenty-one million dollar budget, biggest budget of any department.
Did I indicate I was running with it and doing what you please?
You just said it was my budget.
Can we stay on the point?
Okay.
All right, it's not your budget, it's the city taxpayer budget. All right, so we don't have an item on here. I wanna know the cost before this is voted on. So you can go back and get the cost and bring it back to us if you want, and then I wanna know the cost to move somebody that's on contractual agreement to a, I want somebody to know that, I wanna know the figures it costs to put them into retirement. Are they, you know, this is more than just fifteen thousand. This could be fifty thousand.
I don't think that's what the vote is about. I think the vote, it's not for the position, and, and I believe, and I'll step down, I believe the vote is simply to move this individual into a FRS status. Um, he's already been hired.
You've already hired them?
I have.
Mayor, uh, I asked Ms. Taylor to, to look into the, the cost aspects, but again, I, I think what Chief pointed out, this really isn't a budget approval, so to speak. What it is, is we're moving an individual into the Florida retirement system, senior management. When you move from senior, when you move from classified service, and this was an individual as a contractor, um, into, into senior management pursuant to the, um, retirement laws, it has to basically be approved, and, and that's what we're doing. As a result of that, what ends up happening is the employee has to contribute more because they're now in senior management, and so does the city. And there's an associated cost that Nilsa has for you on that information, but I think it's important to focus on what is before the question, um, of counsel, which is to approve status of senior management, please.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Nilsa Taylor, Director of Administrative Services. Um, the cost to the city, well, it's dictated by the governor. So this year, um, the cost is based on a percentage of wages. Based on the wages and in senior management, there's a thirty-two point zero one percent of the wages for the remainder of this year.
What, what are the wages? Seventy-five thousand?
The wages for, the actual amount for, there are two more pays, um, to this particular individual, and, uh, his wages would be twelve seventy-five sixty-nine.
That's per pay period?
And the cost, yes, that's two pays.
That's two pays?
Two pays.
What's the annual cost?
Well, the thing is, it's, uh, we've got two pays left in June for the position. Basically, his current pay.
How long has he been, how long has he been on this? How long has he been on a, on a, as an employee status versus contractual status?
He's, um, I believe it was effective June first.
June first?
Is that correct?
I'm not sure, how long has he been working with that?
How long has he been on a-
FTE, full-time employee.
Full-time employee versus contractual employee?
Um, May thirty-first.
Yeah, I think just, um, yeah, like two weeks.
Two weeks? Okay. So why do you need our approval if you've already done it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-two thirty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Discussion.
Further discussion, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, um, well, the only thing I'm, uh, a little concerned about is that we have, so we had a contractual employee who's now gonna be getting FRS. Is that what this is for?
He's, he's moving-
From, from, from contract?
From contractual-
Right.
Into full-time status. I, with the absence of my two assistant chiefs, I needed some, uh, upper management bench strength, and he was willing to, to move into that and start giving me-
Mayor, Council, if I could opine on that, uh, also additionally, he's a retired police officer. In order to have the authority that he needs to programmatically do the functions that Chief is, is asking him to do, um, contractors don't typically have the authority to direct employees, um, propose policies and things like that. And so it's necessary that he be transferred from contract, which is not an employee of the city, not a government authority, to, to an employee of the city. When he did that, it's not a choice. We have to basically fund retirement, and this is just funding the difference between, um, what was there before, which was an assistant chief. And, and remember, this is filling in for a position that's vacant now. So let's, let's use a round number. Say it cost him a hundred thousand dollars a year before. Well, he comes in, and now he's taking a hundred thousand dollars. So it's not an additional amount of money. The only increment that is additional is, is the amount that's associated with going from classified employment to, um, senior service, and that's required by the laws of the state.
And that's thirty, that's thirty-two percent, right?
Mr. Sanders, you're not recognized.
Thirty-two percent.
Also, it is, um, taking the position of a assistant chief. You have that ability to, you had, when you came here, we had one assistant chief. You adjusted your administrative staff six years ago to have two. At this point, you're adjusting that now to come back into a, with this person filling that one position. So it's not adding another whole salary and everything, it's just filling in that, and because he's going full-time, he has to be on it.
That's accurate, sir, and so there's no additional cost to the city. This is, um, any cost associated with him is out of salary savings. Again, I have, um, two vacancies right now in my upper management as, as the current hierarchy stands, and I anticipate filling one assistant chief position, um, in the, in the near future, uh, and am not gonna go beyond that in any, anytime soon, and so this will be that second position. So there's no additional cost for this fiscal year, no impact to the budget for this fiscal year. This is all being borne out of what's in the city's police department budget.
Mr. Roth, continue, please, Mr. Roth.
So, so to be clear, I, so I, I get the explanations, and so I'm just trying to figure out, so we have contract going to employee with benefits, which I, I know, you know, the benefits for, for the city, that's, that's where we, you know, that's the big, the big draw to being a, a city employee, is the benefits that we have. I, I didn't get, what salary is he coming in? I, I heard twelve seven five six nine, I don't know. What's, what's the annual salary? I mean, is it low?
He's coming in at a salary of one-twenty, with one hundred being borne by the city, and approximately twenty thousand. It, it may be a little bit more than that, depending, we're actually gonna charge, we're not gonna do a lump sum, we're gonna charge per, uh, per, per his work hourly with forfeiture seizure, and so it won't be less than that based on history, or it'll just simply be more than that. So about a hundred thousand.
But that's within the budget of the police department that is approved, and then, you know, this is for the FRS.
What accountant can, what accountant can manage? What accountant can manage that?
Mr. Sanders.
I know you don't want me to talk, I understand.
No, you'll be able to talk when you're recognized, Mr. Perry.
Really? All right.
Just lastly, it replaces, it's a hundred and twenty, but there was someone making a hundred and twenty there before, or more.
Actually, a hundred and twenty-five.
A hundred and twenty-five.
Well, I see, so, so my clarification, that, okay, but you're not gonna come in with two chiefs now, and then so it's, it's a growth of a whole nother.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, all right.
And, and Mayor, Council, that was the informal discussion Chief and I had had, that she'd had two chiefs. This performs the administrative functions, which is, which is pretty demanding and, and broad as far as the administrative functions. The administrative director, sometimes in a police department, is civilian, sometimes it's commissioned, it depends. Um, this is a highly skilled individual that retired, um, from Tampa, I believe, PD. As a major, he was commissioned, and he went to law school and has a law degree, he's been working in labor, been working in employment, been working in forfeiture, been working in all these areas with that type of specialty. I've worked with him, he seems entirely competent, pleasant, fits in. I think it's a pretty good, um, addition to the staffing complement. Little different, but-
But again, that's also where, when you came in six years ago, you looked at a department that needed to be adjusted. It was adjusted, now with retirements and some other things, you're adjusting it with the growth of the department. So, Mr. Roth, are you finished?
So I, I, and I guess that the, the other part of it would be, um, he's been doing legal, he's gonna continue doing legal?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, so that, that helps me.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sanders?
So we're not gonna hire legal down the road at all? He's gonna handle all the legal that, like he has for three years?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, so you're not gonna come back to us and handle, okay. So in the legal budget that, that's, that we see frequently once a month, we were paying about seventy, seventy-five thousand to, to this man. And, and let me, let me clarify something. The, the man is an excellent man. I'm not, I'm not trying to disparage him as a person. I'm trying to understand the finances here and why we're doing this, and, um, so, if he's listening, I don't think he's here, um, it's not, it's nothing personal. This is, uh, financial, and it's chain of command, and other issues here that I wanna get, uh, spoken to. So you're saying it's one-twenty, it was at seventy, so there is a fifty thousand dollar increase?
It, the, the city budget was at, I'm not sure what it was, some, maybe seventy-five, eighty, but that didn't, that didn't account for monies we paid him from forfeiture seizure. So when he embarks and, and takes on cases related to forfeiture seizure, we pay him out of that account.
Do you know how much that's been? And, and, and have we been, uh, have you reported that to counsel? Because I, I wasn't aware of that.
It's-
It's reported annually. It's a fluctuating amount, dependent on the types of forfeitures and the amounts of forfeitures, and the revenue share and allocations between the federal, state, and local governments, ultimately, after either federal or state forfeiture proceedings take place. It'll change year to year.
But it's not adding fifty thousand dollars.
And we have to, we have to-
Filling him in with the-
Are we allowed to take forfeiture money for administrative services?
Absolutely, we're allowed to take forfeiture seizure for police legal work related to forfeiture seizures. We're allowed to take it for a variety of things.
Okay, all right, I just, I just wanted clarification of that. So, so the increase is fifty thousand dollars, and now we got thirty percent, I'm told, on top of that, so that's another forty thousand dollars, uh, for the retirement. She said it was thirty percent, I don't know.
Again, there is no impact to the PD budget for this position. I had two assistant chiefs, both making in the low one-twenty's. Um, none of their salary came out.
On top of that, there was thirty thousand associated with our contributions, their retirement.
Yeah.
So the total born cost for a hundred twenty thousand dollar employee is typically about thirty percent higher than that.
Mm-hmm.
So you're talking about 150. This individual comes in, he's going to replace one of them. There's virtually a de minimis budget impact, if that. He was previously paid $75,000 a year, not out of FTE salaries and benefits, but out of contract services. Now he's not just providing legal services, but he's providing a, a whole array of additional administrative services. That's it, not that complicated.
Well, it is. It, it says a newly created position, and it doesn't say assistant chief anywhere here. So now I've just heard this is assistant chief. He has a higher rank.
No, he's
No? He's not, well, you're saying he replaced an assistant's chief salary. Is he assistant chief or not?
Just because he replaces an assistant chief's salary doesn't mean
Well, that, that's
Assistant chief, he's an administrative director.
Okay, so he's not assistant chief.
The function
It's just taking that position.
He's taking what position? Assistant chief?
I can't explain.
There's two, well, Mr. Sanders, there's two assistant chiefs. When she came in six years ago, we had one assistant chief.
Okay.
She created a second position.
Okay.
So the position salary is there, 125, whatever it was. So instead of hiring two assistant chiefs, she's going to hire one assistant chief and have Mr. Driscoll go into that position, not as an assistant chief. So when you look at the net neutral of the cost, it's basically not changing a budget. There's no budget adjustment here. It's just putting him in the proper terminology or technology that needs to be for government. So it's not changing the budget at all, and it's not, it's going to hopefully help the budget as we go forward because now he's a, taken that one position that was making that. So it's not adding another position. It's actually probably lessening it, as you said. So, but we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So at this time, we'll start the vote in Ward 1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yeah.
4.
No.
5.
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. All right, Mr. Sanders, D?
D are the minutes from January 26th, 2022, which is February, March, April, May, five months ago. I'm just pointing out again, those are too old for me to be reviewing five months later without going back and looking at, I make notes when I, I'm here, and I go, and I, I go back and because these are some, minutes are somebody else's idea of what they heard on a tape. And not saying that it's, it's not factual, but these are what's by law, by state statute, we are required to do it and required to do it timely, which we're not. So the counsel can opine on that if he wishes. But the point I'm going to make is just wanted it in the record that Mr. Riddel, in the last paragraph of page, they're not numbered, so I'll have to count them. In page, well, they are numbered, too. Six, page seven of the minutes, Mr. Riddel says that, that we performed per state statute or ordinance, and I've asked for that ordinance, he gave it to me in state statute, and I, I'm just saying that, I, I, you don't have to discuss it. I'm just saying I want on record that I don't believe that that's true. And so that's the only comment.
You have D and E?
D, that's, that's the only comment. If somebody wants to comment on it, that's fine.
On D and E, or you have
That's just D.
Okay, all right.
That's D.
Do you have a motion to approve D then?
A motion to approve D with my comments back to January 26th that, that I want it recorded that I'm not in agreement with what that last paragraph on page 7 of 10, I'm not in agreement with counsel on that this was properly, properly done by state statute or ordinance. Any of you repeat that, or?
There's a motion with the second, or is there a second?
A motion to approve, right?
To approve with stipulation.
Okay.
Right.
If I could comment, I don't, I don't think that's a stipulation. His comments on those minutes will be reflected in the minutes of today's meeting.
Okay.
The minutes of the January meeting will be as presented.
Okay, all right, so, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Sanders' motion to approve, Roth to second, and we will
Mr. Mayor, discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to understand that as far as the minutes are concerned, we're not having a correction, we're not having a change, that Mr. Sanders has shared his opinion, that he believes that this is not, the advice that he received was not accurate. Is that about it?
Yes, I haven't went back and, because these are five months old, I have not went back and reviewed the tape. I think that's problematic, number one, and it requires me to come into a meeting and go back to see what was said five months ago to verify that. So I have not had time to do that. So I'm not saying that, that, that I had a statement at that time. I'm saying that the statements in these recorded meetings I do not agree with. After reviewing this last week, I had a conversation with Mr. Riddel, and he, he gave me the ordinance, and I read the state statute, and he is, he has a language that's a little bit fuzzy in here that says he's, and he thinks it's true, but he's not 100% sure.
We have a motion to approve D in a second by Mr. Roth.
Mr. Mayor, I Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
If I read, your concern is with the last paragraph, sir?
Yes.
Allow me to share this. Mr. Riddel explained that according to state statutes, the project does not meet the threshold for bidding requirements. However, he continued, the city has an ordinance in place that requires bidding on public works project, which includes the construction on city buildings that exceed $250,000. Mr. Riddel
My sister's 25, sorry.
Twenty-five.
$25,000, sorry. Mr. Riddel said that because Mr. Perry already saved one estimate, estimate and attempted to contact other companies, counsel could use that reasoning to satisfy the requirement. You don't agree with that.
That's what I said, and so I call the questions to the spoke. Call the question, can I get a second? All right.
No, no, this is
So we've already, we've already seconded, this is
Mr. Sanders, let me run that. When you call the question, you need to get a second to call the question, and then we vote on call the question.
Well, we've already got it. We got it first and second, we don't need to call the question.
You called the question.
I'll take it, I'll take it out.
Okay, you were drawing it?
I withdraw the question.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Let me do this, Mr. Sanders, I've got this. A motion by Mr. Sanders and a second by Mr. Roth to approve the minutes of the January 26th, 2022 meeting. So I'm going to start the vote in Ward 2.
With the stipulation
No, there is no stipulation, it's what you're commenting.
This, this meeting is going to be added to the minutes for next meeting.
Right.
That's what I understood, so
It has nothing to do with you approving the motion.
This is done.
With my comments added to these minutes.
No, they won't be added.
They will be, they will
Not, not the minutes five months ago, no.
It's your opinion that you add, your opinion will be stated today.
Today, right.
Yes. Start the vote in Ward 2.
Well, I don't agree with what Mr. Sanders has said.
Just the vote, just the vote.
Well, I'm trying to decide if I vote
We already had discussion, please, just the vote.
Yes.
Ward 3.
Yes.
Ward 4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
And 1.
Yes.
So the minutes of January 26th, 2022 are approved as written unanimously, 5 to 0. Okay, Mr. Sanders, let's go to E.
Item E, February 9th, 2022. Mayor Brown explained that the council would like to change the current policy, and appropriate process should be followed. And this was because of my comments of Councilman Sanders inquired at this policy was that it could vote to adopt, or if they could create their own policy. And if you read the prior paragraph, Mayor Brown asked Scott Riddel, city attorney, to read a statement. Mr. Riddel explained that the city adopt Manatee County Board of Commissioners procedure rules as it relates to the length of time of public comment during meetings, at which person, each person is limited to a maximum of three minutes. He added, in regards to public hearing comments, groups representing five or more people would have 10 minutes. And I want to make a point that I think this policy needs to be changed because I believe that the citizens come in here expecting an answer, and for me not to be able to address my constituents is rude and not proper. We have council meetings for the public, for them to make comments, and I like to make comments. And I'm being, that this has been a policy, where it's been a followed procedure since I've been here until Mr. Brown came in the office, and he changed that. I'd like to see it go back, if anybody else does, if not, then these are just comments.
So is that a motion to approve E with your comments?
Yeah, unless somebody wants to make a motion that we change the policy, I'm recommending that we change the policy to allow the public's voice to be heard and questioned by representatives that are voted on.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve item E on the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve item E on the consent agenda.
Okay, I have comment that we have a policy in effect right now that was voted on a year ago, January, 5 to 0, by this council of what our procedures will be. And, you know, again, if Mr. Sanders mischaracterizes a lot of things that's happening there, that is inaccurate, we do give opportunity to talk, but at advice of counsel. It is, you let the three minutes go, let them talk, get through the citizen comment, and then make it. As we've said the whole time with Mr. Perry and department heads, you'll see them, if there's a citizen question, they follow them out and try to answer it. So the policy is being followed, as well as from court cases and the other opportunities we had to go through that, we are following that procedure. And until this council by majority changes it, that's what we will do. So I have a motion and a second. Start the vote in Ward 3.
Yeah.
4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
And 2.
Yes.
Approved 5 to 0, thank you. Mr. Sanders, F?
F is to account for revenue and expenses associated with enforcing code enforcement liens and fund stormwater of Bota South Pond. I believe that's F 2213. I'm not sure what this is, I don't know if it's Public Works, I just, I just didn't know. It, it's $54,000 increase. I like to know what $54,000 is we're going to do with it.
Mayor, Mr. Kelly will approach the podium.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Perry and Mr. Kelly, welcome.
Morning, Mayor and Counsel, Tom Kelly, Finance Director. We've hired an attorney to go after some of the older code enforcement liens and so forth, and this is his fee to this point, this fiscal
Wider?
Wider, right, mhm. So we recognize the additional revenue on that side, and we are covering the expenses that he's incurred. This will continue to go on as he continues to work and bring in more revenues as well.
I understand that, but I thought he was on a contingency basis.
Well, he gets 40% of the total recovery minus expenses, according to this invoice.
So this, he gets 40% of what he recovers plus this $50,000?
No. No, this is, this is how the 50 was calculated. It's 40% of what he recovered.
So we don't know, how do we calculate on something we don't know that's going to happen yet?
Perhaps I can shine light onto this. I think we received on the order somewhere between four and five checks from Mr. Weiler. Typically, what he does is he, he initiates enforcement of the liens that come out of, of the code enforcement hearing officer, special magistrate. He operates on a contingency. We have to pay him. The money comes into the city as a revenue, and someone with a finance and accounting background understands it. It has to match an expense. This is the expense. This is to fund the expense.
So, but, but you're, you're estimating the, what he's going to recover before he's recovered, is that true?
No, he's already recovered.
This is already done?
Yeah.
These are checks that have been received
So it's just a bouncing number? That'd be easy to say, it's just a bouncing number, right?
Yeah, it's recognizing the revenue to cover his expenses.
Okay, motion to approve item F.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Who seconded the motion?
Mr. Roth.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And I'd just point out that it's probably one of the most successful undertakings of code enforcement that I've seen in the last year, to try to bring teeth to the, the liens that, once we execute a lien, bring it through the judicial foreclosure process or enforcement dismissal.
And Mr. Perry, for the record, I am the one that championed this in, because we were doing it what are you, why are you laughing about that? You weren't even here.
I, I just was laughing at some other things.
Other things? Yes, I'm, this was not, we, we weren't doing, we weren't doing this before.
Mr. Mayor, can we, we've, we've got a long agenda.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm paid to be here all day.
Please.
And I was paid here to talk with people about these things before the meeting, so I would understand what's coming forward, sir, and I'd recommend you do the same.
All right, Mr. Sanders, we're moving on to item H. Mr. Riddel, is there anything on this?
Well, I mean, before we engage in this, I just want to remind the council, this is active litigation. The council received a confidential attorney-client privileged memo, providing background. I offered to speak with anyone who had any questions. I did not receive any inquiries for questions on this, so I don't know where this is going.
I, I can tell you where it's going. I didn't, I didn't know that you, we couldn't speak of this. I was understanding that you could not speak of this before we signed the documents in the last meeting. That's what I understood, that we could not speak about the, the content of the 600-page settlement until we voted on it.
It's a 24-page settlement.
Well, there were 600 pages there. I don't know what's in it.
Settlement agreement.
Okay, well, I, I don't know, I haven't seen that either, but
The consent decree that was approved by the council at the last meeting will, is still not yet been approved by the court, and even once it is approved, it will be an ongoing, continuous legal action by the city until it is finalized, so
Okay.
And I would point out that
Mr. Perry, come up to the microphone, please.
I just point out that Counselor Sanders taking notes remembers that he was the one that made the motion to approve this.
Okay. That right, but I also, if you go back, I said that we would like to tell the public what to expect with regards to this after, in the very next meeting, and you'll go back and play the tape. Mr. Riddel, you said you would be bringing it forward to tell the public what to expect, because there's, there's a very expensive thing that our public is not being told that I think we should tell them. You're telling me I can't tell them?
If I could interject and answer the question, I think Mr. Callahan is in the back. I remember the public being advised of the ARPA approval of the funding, some description of the use as it relates to sewer lining, general length of the, of the consent decree. All of that information was provided just as recently as May 11th, with an approval from Counsel Sanders. It was written about in two newspapers, I think I did one, one or two TV articles on it. And I think generally, the whole gist of it was, was explained. The nature of the lawsuit, the nature of the remediation and repairs that need to be made, how we plan to do it, financing and the like. There are certain components that, that are coming forward, that Mr. Sanders wants us to basically pass an ordinance for what are called private laterals that are required. We don't do that until the second or third year of this litigation. It's the, that's the, that isn't the low-hanging fruit. We're required to start more substantive remediation efforts than the laterals. We'll get to the laterals. There'll be a time and a place to address it, it's required. But certain components like that have to be followed.
Okay, I spoke to Mr. McClellan about this, and I didn't understand, I'd like to him to, to explain it to me, that I didn't realize it was, this is year two or three. I thought we needed to go ahead and have an ordinance on the books. And Mr. Riddel, I think I've discussed that with you, you didn't say that this can wait for two years, because, I mean, if we can wait for two years, fine, but why, why wait for two years?
Mr. Riddel, is that within this?
No.
No, that's nothing to do with this.
I'd like to make a motion, if I could, to approve the stipulation on attorney's fees and litigation costs with Suncoast Waterkeeper et al., and authorize the mayor to execute.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, hearing none, it was to vote in Ward 5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yeah.
4.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Okay, carries 5 to 0 approved. All right, Mr. Sanders, you're up. M, as in Mary.
M, not N?
The
It was M as in Mary, correct?
M as in Mary.
Correct.
The School Resource Officer Program Agreement between the city and The contract remains the same as last year with updated salary information as per the existing agreement. The school board will reimburse the city for seventy percent of the cost of salaries, benefits, and expenses. And due to the recent report from our police department, and what I'm already were, was aware of, that a resource officer was dating a high school student, I don't think that we should be providing police services to the high school, because we have not told the public.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just appalled, especially in light of what has just happened in Texas, that you would even want to pull police officers out of schools. I make a motion that we approve. I just, I'm appalled. Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three School Resource Officers Program Agreement between the school board and Manatee County and the city of Bradenton.
Second by Mrs. Coachman, discussion, Mr. Roth.
Embarrassed.
Okay, so, I, the reason I was gonna pull it was not this, I just wanted to, since the, I, I'm not sure that anybody was on the board when we went through this conversation, so, I think it was back after Parkland, that the governor demanded that there be recourse, some form of safety in the schools. The school district came down and wanted the city to basically provide cops for every school. We said we, we couldn't do that, we don't have that kind of force. There was negotiations that went on. We had said that we will continue doing what we've always done before Parkland, we've always had, you know, resource officers in key schools, and that, and that also, the law did not state that it was on us, that basically, we're doing this out of the goodness of our hearts, because we believe that we're, this is, this is important to us, and that we were doing it. So, I just wanted to clarify that, so you all know in the future, because I'll be, I won't be here, that we're doing this voluntarily, as good stewards, and we're not, we're not mandated to do this, and we stepped up to the plate. So, that's, that's the only point I wanted to make.
And, Mr. Roth, I was here.
Oh, yes, I, yeah.
I was here as a councilman, and worked to.
Yeah, I know.
And if you remember, we brought in, at that point, Cynthia Saunders, and we drilled her.
Right, we did.
And she felt like it was unfair at the time, but we were very fiscally responsible with what we were doing, for the first part of it, because there was some monies that, if you remember, the state gave, and the school district was trying to keep that and make us pay more.
Right.
But we came down with an agreement with the police department, and to keep sworn officers in our school, which is very important, to keep the sworn officers, because at the timing of it, you need a sworn officer if there's an emergency to protect our children. And that's the number-one thing, I think of this, as well as the opportunity for the school district to pay portions of that, to then have officers year-round, at times, so, it was, it was like a grant, almost like a grant to a point, where we paid a portion, they paid a portion, but we got the officers twelve months a year, not just during school time. So, yeah, so, I mean, that was.
And you, you were, I was thinking as council members, you're now the mayor.
But it was very, very, very important to us.
And that's what I wanted, I wanted the council to know going forward, that we're, we're doing this not because we have to, because we choose.
Under discussion, Chief, do you have anything to add?
Um, yeah. Foremost, what you just said is absolutely not true. It's incorrect, that's an investigation, that's a public record, you're happy to, free to go look at it. It's not true. Please stop mischaracterizing investigations and people who work at the Bradenton Police Department.
Mr. Sanders, please let her talk.
It's just not true, okay? No, it isn't true, sir. It is, I absolutely did not tell you that. I absolutely did not.
In fact, I tried to discuss it with you last week.
Secondly, thank you. Councilwoman.
And it's in this report.
Sir? The report that you're holding up like it's a Bible? No, sir.
It's pretty damning.
It's an opinion.
It's a comment in a union.
Councilwoman Coker.
It is technically, precise.
Absolutely, and thank you for those comments. I can't believe we would even have this conversation in this day and age. Councilman Roth, you supported this program.
Please, Mr. Sanders, your out order, and you stop interrupting this board.
I think all of council saw the need to have trained police officers in our schools. As a matter of fact, we're getting ready to undergo this next month, on the heels of this horrible incident, some additional training, just as a reminder, to bring the fire department, the police department together, to make sure that if something horrific ever happened here, we would be well-trained, well-prepared. This is the cost of doing business and protecting our young kids, and so, it, it just is what it is when it comes to price and, and management. I think we're getting a very good bang for our buck with, with this program, and so, thank you for your support with us.
Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, out of all of us up here, and I'm not saying I'm special, but I work full-time out of middle school. I, our school resource officer is not actually a BPD officer, it's a Manatee County Sheriff's Deputy. Let me tell you something. In this past school year, there have been at least three times our deputy had to step in and save lives. Wasn't a mass shooting, but it was a possibility of people getting hurt. Outside my window, I could hear him ordering the individual to get down on the ground. It may not be mandated, we should be happy to do it. We should do it. Thank you.
Hearing, no further discussion, I'd like to start the vote in Ward One to approve the renewal of school resource officer contract for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Absolutely, yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yeah.
Four.
Not with the conditions that I just presented.
So, no, is four.
Not with the conditions.
And five.
Yes.
So, passes four to one with Mr. Sanders, voting no. All right, Mr. S, yes, sir.
Just as we move forward, these are rather spurious types of statements and allegations. I just think it's important to admonish council, that there's probably private rights of action about some of these individuals, defamatory actions. At common law, when you speak about somebody's chastity, you don't even have to prove damages. That in and of itself is defamatory. So, the city has a duty to defend the individual in their official capacity, as well as indemnify against judgments. In this case, I would send a letter, after an admonishment, to a counselor, saying, "The city and the taxpayers have no interest in doing that." If, if, if you want to engage in spurious allegations, defamatory comments, and disparage people to that level, that's on you, and, and if there's judicial proceedings that cost the city money, we're out.
Read.
Mr. Perry, isn't that what you've done to me? Yes. And, Mr. Perry, I'm looking out for the parents of the kids that go to that school.
Again.
And that, that is, having a resource.
Can we move on with the agenda, please?
How can she interrupt me, and I can't even get in my comment?
We're gonna move on, Mr. Sanders.
Well, just let me finish.
Mr. Sanders, on.
You don't want to hear it, I know, you don't want to hear it.
We're moving to S.
Well, we, we are putting our kids in danger if we don't sell out of them.
We are not doing that, Mr. Sanders, and please do not characterize people in ways that is untrue.
I haven't characterized any individual.
Oh, yes, you have, so, but that, that'll be there. So, Mr. Roth, you have S?
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to, because this is probably gonna be the only time we look at it, this is the special event application for the Riverwalk East grand opening. I just wanted to state that my desire would be, the city council approves the agenda for, is this their ceremony? The, I, I don't, I don't think anyone was here the last time, as a council, that when we had the last Riverwalk ceremony, it was, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, were you here? Yeah.
Yeah, I was here.
It's moving, revolving chairs up here, I, anyway.
Keep going, Mr. Roth here.
Anyway.
Before I get you a bigger shovel, keep going, Mr. Roth.
I'm sorry. So, the point being, just that, you know, the last Riverwalk grand opening kinda went some different directions, and, you know, it was, it was, I just wanted to have, have say over the, what the agenda looks like.
I'd have no issues with that.
Okay, that's it.
So, we make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve special event application, Riverwalk Grand East opening.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, by Mr., first, or a motion by Mr. Roth, second by Ms. Coker, and let me make sure.
Point of order, though, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would like to remind everyone that this is not going to be city-funded.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Well, the, the event itself might not be city-funded, but the park is completely city-funded.
Well, I was talking about the event.
Okay, I'm, anyway, yes, yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, T.
Item T is a budget adjustment for distribution of the ARPA funds. The ARPA funds are about ten-point-five million, right, Mr. Perry?
Ten-point-eight, I believe.
Ten-point-eight, all right. And we're taking nine million of that, according to this document, correct me if I'm wrong, and we're increasing it to nine million to go to the sewer lining and probably some work out at the sewer plant for filtration. I'm assuming that, and then we've discussed this, that's not a problem, but we had, did increase it here a little bit from six, well, I, I just want an explanation of how we've increased that, and that leaves less money for the other things we talked about with ARPA. Would that be true or not true?
Mayor, perhaps, Mr. McClellan, Mr. Kelly can talk, let, let Mr. Kelly talk about the technical aspects, what's before council, as it relates to the, the grant use. And the budget adjustment.
Yeah, this budget adjustment, it's six and a half going to miscellaneous sewer lining, and then there's the manhole lining is another part of the amount, seven million, eight-fifty-five, I believe it was. And, and that, I don't believe has changed from what we initially talked about.
What says increase, what's the total?
Oh, the, well, then you also have the east side drainage that's coming, that's a fifty percent match on that grant we got, so, you're gonna see that one million, one-forty-five in two places on this adjustment, because the other part of it is coming out of the stormwater fund, so.
What will that leave left, out of ARPA?
I believe we have eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand roughly left in ARPA that.
Yeah, but we identified other things a few months ago, like four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for executive salaries, seventy-five thousand dollars for.
Right, after all that, we'll have about eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand left.
Three-hundred thousand dollars for cybersecurity upgrades, another blah, blah, blah. It's all in the attachment? And, and that was provided to the council and the councilor? Go, go ahead, just if you could get us up to speed, Mr. McClellan, thank you.
So, attached to this agenda item are the minutes from the previous council meeting with a breakdown of how the ARPA funds were designated to be used, including others outside of the public works realm. So, there's seven-hundred, seven-point-eight-five-five million was going to the Clean Water Act lawsuit work items, which is lining of sewer manholes and lining of sewer pipes. And then there was one-point-one-four-five million, that was the city's match for the one-point-four-five-million-dollar resiliency grant that we got for the east side drainage project. And then there's a subsequent breakdown in the attachment from the previous council minutes to dictate where those other funds were going.
Mr. McClellan, the sewer lining, is this out in the community, in, in city streets?
Yes, this is the sewer mains, that some are in the city streets, some are in easements behind houses, depends upon where they are, but, but we've identified all of those as part of our program that we're addressing.
Will, will that be part of the program where you have to smoke test them, and possibly the homeowners?
We have already completed the smoke testing that was mandated as part of the settlement agreement.
Well, I thought that was ongoing, as you moved into different neighborhoods. You, you did the whole city on.
No, we did the specific areas that were required under the settlement agreement.
Oh, okay, but you're gonna do more?
We will likely do more as we get further along in.
And that's what you was telling me from the previous conversation, that we are gonna have to pass an ordinance, so that the public knows where this, and I thought you meant we need to do it now, so that the public are aware.
I, I will tell you that our general approach to the settlement agreement is, is that we are fast-tracking it as much as possible. It's a five-year agreement, and we're hoping to be done in two and a half, three.
So, when do you think we should tell the public that there's maybe a potential cost to them to do this? Do you think that we can wait for two years?
I, I'm not standing here today ready to tell you when I think we would be ready to put that ordinance before somebody.
What would you recommend?
Let me just chime in. The infrastructure build-out, remediation, repair, and the like is an ongoing issue. It's a utility system underground. Some of it will be matched, we, we just got a five-hundred-thousand-dollar match, I think, from the state, direct appropriation, first time we ever received one of them, that'll go to sewer lining, that's five-hundred thousand we don't have to put in. As it relates to the question, when do we have to tell the public? I think I have told the public as clear as day that this is an ongoing issue. A combination of funds will be used, ARPA, revenue from the utility itself's capital fund, other sources, the state, federal government perhaps, and so, I've tried to make that as clear as I can with what I project will be needed in the future, to bring this up to completely modernized standards. Some of these sewer pipes are fifty years old, they're made of clay, we've got pipe pump stations in the same condition. It's an ongoing initiative, but at the end of the day, it is the, probably the most core infrastructure of any local government, to basically drain source, provide fresh water, potable water, and the like. It, it's continuous, and so, I hope I've been quite clear and transparent with the public. I think I have.
I agree. Mr. McClellan, your, I, discussion was that, I said, well, what do you project this will cost? And I said thirty million, you said, oh, no, more than that. And so, with this, we've got a big number coming at us, that's not involved in ARPA or anything else, and I said, well, what about the homeowner? When we do these tests, and we find out that they have to replace their sewer line from their house to ours in the street? Well, we're gonna try to have a program where that we supplement them, whether, we don't know what it is gonna be yet, but shouldn't we be talking about that to our public right now?
We don't.
Well, as soon as we have the outline of what the ordinance would look like, and how that would be prepared, we would be in a position to do that. I am not in that position right now to tell you when that will be.
And it'll also be subject to further negotiations and discussions with plaintiffs on the case about what's acceptable. Some of these laterals are on private property, and someone's gonna say, "You're not coming on my land to do anything." Right now, check valves, the backflow preventers, basically, out of Flint, Michigan, I think, was started, what, ten years ago? The feds foisted that on local governments, saying that if you work on a plumbing system, you've gotta require them to put a check valve in. This is something similar that the ordinance may or may not include, as it relates to how to implement the elimination of private laterals contributing to I and I, infiltration and inflow, which of course contributes to volumes and capacities and pollutants within our sewer system.
Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve budget adjustment twenty-two, twenty-eight.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second by Mr. Roth, we've had discussion. Start the vote in Ward Three.
Yeah.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
And two.
Yes.
Approved unanimously. Thank you very much, staff and Jim and Tom, for all that information. Okay, moving on, Mrs. Madam Clerk.
Next, we have the second reading and public hearing for ordinance three-zero-nine-eight, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part One, Charter and Related Laws, Subpart B, Related Laws, Article Three, Firefighter's Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Section Seven, Pre-Retirement Death, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Here With, and Providing an Effective Date. Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Here With, and Providing an Effective Date. And Ms. Taylor is here, if you all have any questions.
Questions for Mrs. Taylor before we go to the public hearing? Mr. Rudesell, anything else before public hearing? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to motion to approve ordinance 3098.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, or a motion by Ms. Barnaby, second by Mr. Sanders. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Yes, next, we have the first reading for ordinance 4001, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter 22, Article Three of the Code of Ordinances entitled Vacation Rentals, amending Section 22-52, Subsection A, Mandatory Registration, amending Section 22-54, Subsection Three, Certificate of Registration, amending Section 22-58, Subsections A and C regarding inspections, deleting Section 22-60, Subsection D regarding Emergency Lighting, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, Providing for Repeal of Ordinances in Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for July 20th.
All right, so, no action needed on that, other than just saying that it's gonna be on the 25th, or 20th of July. Thank you very much. Second reading and public hearing. All right, um, Mrs. Melton?
Next, we have the police chief, Ms. Bevan, Chief Bevan, I'm sorry, Manatee County School Board Shooting Range.
Hello, I've had the opportunity, although I didn't speak to you, I think.
I checked with the financials.
Yeah, I heard that you guys had spoken to speak with each of you individually about this. I provided you with a snapshot, and the simple justification is, is we, we can't place it where we initially placed it without a lot of concerns about ingress egress, because one of the adjacent owners has expressed some concerns about his crops and the viability of his land. And so, the school board went out there and worked with him extensively and came up with this alternative site. I think it's a win-win for all of us. Again, this isn't something that's gonna cost us any money, but it's gonna provide not only Bradenton Police Department, but the entire county, the entire region, a, a great benefit with not only a range, but a driving pad as well.
And everything that I've heard, chief, is that it's about a 45, 30 to 45-minute savings on time getting to the location once the roadway is, is adjusted in through this, landowner and the school district's gonna pay for all that infrastructure cost. But you think at today's distance, at $5 a gallon, just going and coming will save us 20 bucks on property.
It's already a long ways out. Um, we don't want it to be longer, so.
I think it's a win-win, so, but there's no action needed today because there's some logistical things or?
So, yes, sir. Um, so, we, we kinda late in the day realized that we need to change, um, the, the documents that you all had initially agreed upon and approved to, to tweak it, to comply with this. I think what we're looking for today is simply a, um, an agreement that we move forward with that and make the necessary changes, or the school board make the necessary changes, and we can bring it back to you in July for a vote and signatures.
Mr. Rudesell, anything to add to that? I know you've been involved.
Yeah, it, it's just amending the ground lease that was approved by the city council and the school district to reflect the, um, the new location, as well as, I think there's some impact to the timing of the school district as well. They were supposed to start this month, and that's not gonna happen, so, it just needs to be updated with an amendment.
So, we're just getting this for informational purposes?
Yeah, it's getting it for informational purpose. The lease will have to have specific, uh, probably meets and bounds on where the location is. You can't just say, like, in the middle of, you know, our 600 acres. Um, so, we're gonna have some definition in there. Also, the ingress egress easement by the landowner itself will have to be incorporated into the lease and probably recorded so that if somebody changes later and says, I don't want you using that road anymore, it's like, no, we have the legal right to do that. I'd also lastly point out that in today's world of active shooters, um, if you go out to the outdoor range there right now, it is a very necessary type of training facility for tactical, uh, breaching and, and, and other type of tactical operations for rapid response. If you went out there right now, you'd be embarrassed what we have for what we call a live firehouse and clearings and things like that, um, when we have to get into a place real quick and we don't know what, behind walls and how the police do their, their policing business. This will add a lot in that regard, and it doesn't cost us anything. It's about a $4 million undertaking. The school board has, um, money to do that, um, through different grants, and, and they have to move quick to access those grants. There are deadlines to them. That's what this is all about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Uh, next, we have Planning and Community Development Director, Ms. Singer, amendment to a development agreement with 920 Manatee Associates LLC.
Good morning, Robin Singer, Planning and Community Development Director.
Point of order.
Ms. Singer, excuse me. Mr. Sanders?
You're, uh, discussing development 920?
Yes.
We do not have conflict counsel here. I suggest that we not move forward without that conflict counsel. Mr. Rudesell, you're very well aware of this, and you're very aware that this could make this whole, uh, possibility. I've asked for counsel, it's not been provided. We've done this a number of years ago before most of this counsel, and you admitted that you have that conflict, and so, it's not fair to me or the, uh, other people on this board to listen or make any opinion of this at this time.
Mayor, um, I, I, I appreciate counselor's comments, and I don't wanna go back in history and rehash why we don't have counsel. What I can tell you is that there was allegations about prior representation of existing city attorney and the firm as it relates to the prior representation within NDC. They thought that under the rules of professional conduct, it was advisable for them to conflict off the case. We got notified of that. We assigned conflict counsel, Ms. Vos, who's on contract with us. Of course, Ms. Vos submitted the letter that she was threatened with a bar complaint and other problems with Counselor Sanders. She said, I don't need this problem, I don't wanna do city work. Since that time, I've asked Scott, I don't want you to speak on substantive issues of the case, but can you see if we can obtain other substitute counsel? From what I understand, he's talked with a lot of lawyers in the area that do land use and this type of practice, and they've said things like, we read the newspaper, we know what happens down there. We don't wanna bar complaint threats or that type of professional arrangement either. I don't know if we can even get a lawyer. At some point, there'll be some lawyer that we can get, but that's why we sit here without a lawyer. And, and, and I guess you can ask Mr. Rudesell about that, but, but there were fairly colorful comments on how the legal community, our local bar, views certain members of governance and, and what occurs. So, we can be mindful. I wanted it to come before you because decisions have to be made. I don't practice in, in Florida. I was licensed, as you all well know. I, I'm not anymore. Practiced law for a long time. I think you can look at the issues here and make a decision whether you need legal counsel or not.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Rudesell, do you have any comments, or is this something you think that would have issues?
Well, I, I'm not gonna speak at all to the, to the substance of the matter that, that's before the council. You know, as it relates to conflict counsel, I will continue to, to reach out to attorneys in the area who are qualified and, you know, who, who aren't doing significant work in the city that would, that would be able to serve, um, and I will do the best I can.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Roth, I want to hear what you gotta say, and then I have something to also say.
Um, so, look, I'm, as these meetings go on, I'm just trying to keep everything moving, doing the best I can. Since this issue exists, and you and I had this discussion when you first came in, would it not be a good time for the city to consider? We've talked about having a staff lawyer who would be able to slip in, not saying Mr. Rudesell is gonna go away or that or anything like that, but would it not be beneficial to have a staff lawyer for moments like this?
Uh, I think you can make that argument. These situations would be beneficial. Um, I, I think that it's beyond just a staff lawyer. Typically, you need the resources to support that, paralegals. Um, if we're doing a lot of property work, maybe some support in that area. Um, it's a costly undertaking, and I know that Mr. Rudesell is pretty reasonable in what he bills for and not. Certain counselors are rather taxing on, on the city's budget. Um, and, and we'll look at that when, when the billings come in and the itemization to it, and we can make a financial decision.
We had a discussion earlier where the chief has gone off and gotten a staff lawyer, seems to be working out so well that, that, that's hired it. So, I, I think that this opens the door for this discussion, that, that, uh, you know, not that anyone's gonna lose their contract or whether, that, that, but I think it would be a good time for the city to look at. Look, we're spending money, my God, we're spending more money than I've looked at the whole time I've been here. I mean, I think this is a good time to open that door and say, shouldn't we have a staff lawyer for stuff that Mr. Rudesell doesn't need to do? Small stuff.
Absolutely.
Contractual stuff. Itty, nitty bitty.
And, and you and I discussed that, and I brought Ms. Belzer in. If you remember, she had an MPA, Masses Public Administration. She was an attorney herself. I was hoping for her to move into this area and start doing some of that stuff. Unfortunately, she didn't particularly like the environment either.
So, so maybe we should hire, look into hiring a lawyer, instead of someone that's gonna get a law, bar degree, you know, get someone. I think that would be, I think we're here.
Mr. Roth, and, and again, you and I were here when I think we went through the whole process of with Mr. Lish retiring.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Sanders was here, I believe, and when you look at that, we had these discussions in open meetings, and to create, like Mr. Perry said, another whole department would be a lot deeper dive than trying to get a conflict lawyer right now that we can't get because of the situation we're in. And it's not fair to anybody that, oh, well, we can't do that, so you gotta have a conflict, because we can't get a conflict lawyer. And, and again, what I, I, I don't disagree with you. I, I'm willing to look at anything from the standpoint of left to right and figure out where to go, but to create a whole department is not what the police department has done right now. There, it's basically, we had a, a person on there that was a, a contractual, which we had a contractual person that we, conflict lawyer, that we know the whole situation. Then you go through, um, with the two deputy chiefs being gone, the assistant chiefs being gone, to fill in, that's actually going to save that department money long-term. So, there's some comparisons, but not very equal comparisons to that. And my thing is, today, we gotta stay on task with this, is we've got somebody coming in here that's building something that needs some approvals, and, and again, some of those, I think, some of these approvals probably could have been signed off by Mrs. Singer at some points, but she wanted to bring it because of the high profile of it, so we can't criticize one for the other when we don't have, because we can't get it.
I'm not criticizing anything. I'm, I'm offering.
I'm not saying you are, I'm just saying.
I'm offering a suggestion that, 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 you know, so, I was here when Mr. Lish left, and I could tell you that, that we did, um, you know, Mr. Rudesell's firm was willing to come in at Mr. Lish's salary base or, or fees. We've now gone way past that. I mean, way past that, and I was not, and was not made aware that there was gonna be so many conflicts when, when that, when we hired. It wasn't.
No, but I'm saying, what, if you look at so many, we haven't had, we haven't used a conflict lawyer that often, and we hired the conflict lawyer, I think, two years ago to go through a, uh, change in our amendment. That's when the conflict lawyer got hired, to, to go through that process. I don't think we had a conflict lawyer before that, or we had some that we contacted.
Yes, we did. Well, I, I, once again, I'm not.
But again, let's stay on task with this today, and I don't disagree, I'm open to Mr. Perry, you know, getting more information.
And, and, and I don't think it would require a whole legal department. I think that maybe, maybe a lawyer and a, and a parallel. I don't know what it would be, but I, I don't think it has to be something that's so big that we can't afford it. Um, and, and my God, we seem to be able to afford everything right now. And I'm not, I'm not stopping the brakes on anything. No, we're, gee, we're.
But I, I disagree with that from the standpoint of we had, we have a budget, we're working within that budget, and we are doing a lot of things. But that's because our city may have been neglected in the past, and it needs to get to that next level. And we hired Mr. Perry as the administrator with big government, because of what he was in Albuquerque, to handle our smaller government and giving him the task to do it. I think he's doing a great job and working through it, with a lot of interesting situations.
This conversation, and we've been agreed on this conversation, and we're about ready to start on a new budget with all new revenues. I mean, the, the price of real estate means our revenues are going up. I mean, that's just, we're, we're looking at a big tax, uh, windfall just from homes that used to sell for 300, now going for 500.
We can always lower taxes. We can always lower taxes.
But that's also, you make a great point there, Mr. Roth.
You wanna make a motion?
You're the one that has said that recession's coming, and so, you've gotta be prepared. You said that a while back, but you've said it to me, and with, that we gotta be careful of what we look at bigger now, because that could pull back in a year and change. We don't know. You know, I hope not. Florida's different because of where we are, but. But, Mr. Sanders, you have a motion?
We're, we're off topic, but, uh, just for the record, uh, we budgeted $28,000 to look for inside counsel, and we have not done anything on that, to my knowledge.
You have a motion?
Uh, no, I don't have a motion. I, no.
You just said I have a motion.
No, I didn't say I had a motion. I said a comment.
No, you said motion.
Oh, he was responding to me.
I was just responding.
Okay, but you said a motion, maybe.
No, I didn't say a motion, but come on, what, what?
But I'm just saying what you said, so, you have a motion. Mrs. Coker, did you have a motion? Or do we have?
No, no, hold on, I'm not done with my comments. Can I finish?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
We've got a true conflict here that we shouldn't be discussing this, and that's all I'm gonna say. If you, if you continue to discuss it, uh, I think, I think we have violated an ethics law.
I'd like to move forward.
Mr. Rudesell, is there ethics laws being violated here today?
No, I, I, I don't know what my esteemed co-counsel at the end of the day is was referring to.
Mr. Rudesell, you have a conflict. You know your firm has a conflict on this issue, and you should be, you should be recruiting someone to discuss these matters with all of counsel prior to the meeting, not saying, well, we just couldn't find one. I don't buy that, I don't believe that. There's somebody somewhere that will do this, and, uh, in fact, we already have someone that is doing it on another issue that is gonna be coming up, uh, with the same developer.
Mr. Perry?
Before the council is, is the matter of 920, I think it can be discussed. At the end of the day, you can all decide whether you wanna take action without representation. If the legal issues are that heavy, then you make that decision, say, no, Mr. Rudesell, Mr. Perry, go back, and now I want you to go to Ocala and find a lawyer. As far as Mr. Rudesell, he has tried to get us a lawyer, and to be brutally frank, blunt, honest and transparent, it's because of Counselor Sanders. They've said that much.
Do you know that attorney's still working for us?
Okay.
You have attorney doesn't have a contract?
Now, that attorney doesn't work for us. She sent us a letter. I have it in my package. It's the Vos Law Firm. She couldn't say Sanders any more clearer than she did.
Okay, I got it.
She will not take on any new cases. She is finishing up that case that does not involve Counselor Sanders. I don't need to go down this road. Um, I, I, I'm just laying out the facts. We all know them to be facts. Does it seem surprising to anybody that that was the case? Would you do business that way? Of course not.
Well, at this time, Mr. Perry, thank you. I'd like to go through what Ms. Singer has to say, and then we can decide as a council direction. Thank you, Ms. Singer.
All right, so, January 2021, uh, city council approved a development agreement for the 920 project. There were a few stipulations specific to, um, planning and zoning, and I do wanna point out a scrimmer's error on my part on the front page. I indicated that its .474 acres is actually 74, 747 acres. So, that results in, under the comprehensive plan, a total of 149 dwelling units that could be built on the property under low and moderate income, and this is my understanding, these are, um, workforce housing units, and therefore will fit into that category. Under your development agreement, on the, uh, under your wherewith clauses, you indicate that, um, city council indicated that it could be approximately 130 units. But when you go to the land use and planning, stipulations under Section Four indicates not to exceed 130 residential units. There are desires to build 137 residential units, uh, because it is well within the density allowance, and we're promoting, um, of course, workforce housing. Staff recommends, um, definitely that that is something that can and should be approved. The other, um, issue that we wanted to bring before you, under Section Four, um, the conceptual site plan and building elevations are attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. So, under Exhibit A, um, you see on, uh, this presentation on the left there, it's a full color rendering, and of course, it suffers by comparison when you look to, to the one on the right, but we did. we did ask them for renderings of the actual, what's actually being proposed out there. And you can see that it does have some of the same vertical ins and outs, and it has articulation on the 11th floor. Part of the stipulation is they wouldn't have that step back on the 8th floor. That was already approved under the development agreement, but they are providing something else on the 11th floor. This includes some extensions into the right-of-way along 10th Street. Those need to be approved by the city, but along Manatee, those are under approval right now with FDOT. That application has been submitted. The ground floor extensions into the right-of-way are permitted under the code. It allows for awnings and, and pedestrian coverings on, along the, the right-of-ways and into the right-of-ways along the ground floor elevations. So we feel that this is still achieving the intent of the original elevations, and, but it is a change that we felt was significant enough that if we're going to approve it, we need to bring that back for discussion purposes with City Council. I do feel that I can approve this administratively, but I wanted your input on it because you had seen those original elevations under Exhibit A, and I just didn't want there to be any surprises when something got built and you were going back and making a comparison between those. So here is the other elevations more at grade level, to give you a little bit better idea of how this property will address the street. We feel that there's going to be some retail opportunities as desired and in some cases required by code, and so we feel like this is definitely an improvement over what was originally proposed, but we wanted to get your input on that before we approve it officially.
So, Mrs. Singer, you had said that, you know, administratively, some of these things obviously can, you can do-
Yeah.
-and go forward. So in your opinion-
Yes.
If, if you could just administratively do this, is there a conflict that we would need an attorney sitting here with this, for this council?
I think that the not to exceed 130 units, I, I do need City Council's approval on that because it's very clear in the development agreement, even though it's a stipulation under planning and zoning matters, I, I feel that that is something that City Council does need to give me guidance on.
And it's a, we can, actually, they could have asked for 149, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So there's still 12 under-
Yes.
-what they could actually ask for. So from a conflict standpoint, is that something we need an attorney to advise us on?
Well, since I'm not an attorney, I can't tell you if you need one, so.
And that's exactly the answer I knew you'd give, but I wanted to ask it.
Yeah.
And again, in this community, we are thousands of workforce affordable housing down in what we need. So adding seven, I wouldn't, I would hope anybody here would not think adding seven. And again, it's not asking for above what's technically allowed in our plan, so I just think that's something we all got to think about, and obviously, when we go through it. So do you have more, or?
No, that's it.
Okay, so, all right, any questions?
So besides the seven-
Mr. Roth?
I'm sorry. Besides the seven extra units, is it the cosmetics on the outside that changed?
It is, it's a, it's a little different cosmetically, aesthetically, the, the extensions of the right-of-way, that, that's a little different from what was originally proposed.
I like them.
Okay. And that, and that's, again, I think I can, it could, because in the agreement, it indicates that they are conceptual plans and elevations, I feel that there is latitude for me to do that administratively, so.
And Mr. Roth, as we've all sat up here over time, you always see a concept, and it's always a little different when they get to-
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes totally different.
But this is pretty 12 stories stuff that I've seen, so. Now, Mr. Sanders, and then Mrs. Barnaby.
Ms. Singer, are we still waiving all impact fees on this project?
Uh, on the impact fees, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't, unless it says in here that they're waiving impact fees, we're not waiving impact fees.
It says in the original agreement there was waiver.
Okay, then we're, we're abiding by the, the agreement.
Original agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't, I just wondered if it's changed. Do you know how many, how many dollars that is?
No, not at this time.
Could you?
Those are generally calculated in the building permitting process. We're not there yet.
Right. Probably a million dollars, right?
Yeah.
I don't speculate.
I don't know. I, I couldn't say.
Yeah. All right, are we, are we still waiving seven years' adblockant tax? And is that from the date of occupancy or from the date of this development agreement?
I don't know.
So I believe it's from the date of the development agreement. I wish I was wrong, but, so that has passed, and so by the time this is finished, you know, that, that period i- is up. Does this still require us to give up a ninety-some-odd-year lease on our parking lot by the post office at $10 a year?
Yeah, this isn't changing anything that-
Isn't changing any of that?
This development agreement or the one with the CRA?
So in that agreement, that it wasn't included in the January meeting of last year, that I pointed out, that there was no document that was presented in county court records for the amount of money that would be charged to the person living there, and it was Mr. gave me a copy at the meeting, and that still has not been recorded. Are we not required to mandate that as a project that's supposed to be allegedly attainable housing because there's no document to support the amount that can be charged on this? It could be charged at market rate with the way it stands today?
I believe there is a lure that isn't, hasn't come through my office, but I think the county actually participated in the creation of a lure.
Right, and there's no document that says that the, the amount that's to be charged, it's, it's open, unless it's been filed in the last week or so.
Yeah, that, that's what the lure would stipulate.
And it, it does not, so does that not disqualify the, the project?
Not that I'm aware of, but again, I'm not an attorney, I couldn't say.
No, and I think that this council, the council that approved that contract approved it by majority, so, you know, going back and rehashing things, if, even if you were one that voted against it, isn't what this is about today.
Right.
Well, I understand that.
Moving forward today.
I understand that, but-
So we've both got to talk on topic and continue to move forward.
Well, we, this is why we need a conflict attorney. We didn't have one then, by the way, too, which I, concerned me. We didn't have, not, we did not have a conflict attorney last January when this was brought up 10 days after the election, Mr. Brown.
The-
That was your first item of agenda and-
Well, 10 days after the election, I wasn't seated yet.
Uh, 10 days after you're swearing in, so there's-
But that's, that's something that they brought to the council and the CRA.
All right.
And was approved. So you want to bring up things that are already approved by the council by majority, so, you know, if the council feels uncomfortable-
Well, I don't, I don't believe that was done properly because we didn't have opportunity to speak.
So, well, that's your opinion.
When I go to court, I want an attorney that sits beside me that's on my side.
Sorry. Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note, is my understanding that Ms. Voss did review, excuse me, did review that agreement. What she did not do is attend the meeting.
And she was not available for me to talk to at that time, and she only charged $247. Do you think that she reviewed all the agreements? There's no way she could have done that with that amount of pay. There's no way.
Now, you're saying your attorney's opinion without-
I don't have an attorney, I, I want one.
There's no way she can do something. She reviewed it, and, you know, again, trying to go, but Chair, well, you know, Ms. Singer, so you're looking for a motion to approve the amendment to the development or deny.
The amendment to the development agreement.
Yeah, so that's up to this council to make a motion. Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that by our plan, it could be 149 units.
By our comprehensive plan, correct.
Correct. And what they're asking for is the inclusion of another seven units for 137, so it is under what our comprehensive plan would allow.
Correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments to the development agreement regarding total dwelling units and building elevations.
There's a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Coker, second by Mrs. Coachman. Discussion, Mr. Sanders?
Ms. Singer, is a 12-story building in our comprehensive plan today?
I don't believe our comprehensive plan speaks to the number of stories. That's under the form-based code.
I thought we had a limitation of like eight stories.
Form-based code.
This is, this falls, this is under the zoning, the form-based code. They get additional stories for incentives, so they are correct and consistent with the form-based code.
This doesn't take a special approval?
No.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. We'll start the vote in Ward 5.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
No, I believe this is ill-legal.
All right, so Kerry's four to one. Thank you. Mrs. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Sorry. Ms. Singer?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, this is a discussion of a, whether or not the, the city would move forward on initiating a rezoning and land use petition for a property owner. The property owner in question is General Propeller. They're in existing industrial use that's located between 8th and 9th avenues and to the east essentially of where the Tropicana properties are. They, what they're proposing to do because of the use and because of the development standards that they have to abide by because they're currently in the form-based code, they are somewhat limited in what they can do. And we felt that it would be much more beneficial to them if they had an industrial zoning and an industrial land use. However, you can't spot zone a property, you can't spot zone an island of property, and so I'm showing here the future land use, but also the zoning is similarly consistent. And so we encourage them to contact the, I believe it's Frontier Communications that's owns the property in between. They've had a very difficult time getting in touch with them. We discussed with the city attorney whether or not the city could initiate the petition to spot zone the property. We believe it would be an upzone, not spot zone, but zone, rezone the intermediate property as well. We believe it would be a benefit to them, it would actually be an upzoning for them. However, we haven't given an official opinion on whether or not we think this rezoning and land use change would be a good idea. There is residential in the area. We put it through the same review process with the same level of scrutiny as we would if the petitioners came forward with the petition. However, because the owners of General Propeller cannot petition to rezone their neighbor's property, it would have to be a city-initiated petition. So before we move forward on that, we're not asking for an opinion. We, we know you've had full level of scrutiny when, at the time that the petition comes forward, but before staff spends the time in initiating that type of petition, I wanted to bring it before City Council for your authorization.
So what Ms. Singer, Mayor, is asking for is request for permission to move forward with the city initiating the petition. The petition itself will come back to council.
Yes.
Ms. Coker?
At, at first blush, it seems a little heavy-handed for us to rezone someone's property without them being involved. I, I am a little concerned about that. I don't know if there'd be certain notices. I, I just, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Well, and I think to that, and discussions that have been had with Ms. Singer, the property owner, Mr. Perry, Mr. Rudicell over time, is we know how hard it is to get ahold of any of these type companies. So I don't think that, you know, hopefully, when it comes down to it, they're going to get involved before it comes to the point, you know, because you, you call, and you call, and you call, and you call, and if they don't ever answer, then the council could deny it at the time. But it's not fair to this property owner that wants to spend quite a bit of money to do something in an area that probably will never change from what it is. You know, so they're upgrading the area. So I think it's something that ultimately, and Scott, maybe you can, Mr. Rudicell, sorry, that can say, hey, if it comes down to it, and all of a sudden, the neighboring property says, no, 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 we don't want it, well, ultimately, it makes their property more valuable at the end.
Right, I mean, I, you know, when, when it came, and we discussed it with staff, and we talked about that, that, you know, are there, are there potential negative impacts on that property owner from doing it? And I think the, the expectation is that based on their use, this would be something that would likely be beneficial for them. But as you say, if, if they get engaged, because they will receive formal notice from the city if this process is initiated, and if they were to get engaged and say, hey, we object to this zoning, then obviously, we can be, right.
But there's, there's, it's hard to get those type of communication companies engaged because this owner has tried, we have tried on some property we have that's adjacent to some of our property, and they don't, they just don't, there's nobody to call, you know, but this would get that process started. And then if they object, then we, it doesn't, it's the bite at the apple that they get. And, and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
I'd also point out, Mayor, that it's an upzoning-
Right.
-which will enhance the value of the property. It's not a downzone. No, I, I understand, but, but, but when we try to talk about telecom and reaching telecom, half these properties were done in the divestiture of the 1970s.
They don't even know they own.
Ma Bell, they don't even know they own them, as evidenced by the 6th and 1st Street property behind our, our Public Works ownership of that property. We've tried forever, and we're at the point now where we have to basically condemn the property. They go, we don't even know about it. And so we can't tell you if we're willing to sell it or not, but if you condemn it, since we don't know about it, we'll be okay on the eminent domain side of things.
Yeah.
I get it, and, and I think it's also noteworthy to talk about, General Propeller's a fairly decent employer here, economic development, and they've come to us saying, we don't plan on changing necessarily what we do there, but, but it is necessary for our continuous business operations. I'd hate to see them find land out on the east side of Manatee County that's treated a little bit better and appreciated more.
Ms. Barnaby?
I was just going to say, I'd like to make a motion to allow city staff to proceed with the application for rezoning and a future land use amendment, again, with the understanding that this may be the trigger that gets the attention it deserves, and then we can engage with the property owners that are nearby. Because right now, they're not talking to anybody, apparently.
Do we have a second? She had a motion, so we need a second for, for their discussion.
I guess I'll second it. Further discussion.
Mr. Roth, you had a question?
I, I don't know, not, this, this, this may seem like it's little, but it's not. So I, I don't know enough about this right now, just looking at this right now to form an opinion one way or the other. I, to, to say move forward means we're on the road, and I, I can't do that right now.
But you also will get a chance to, if the people don't respond to you.
We're not approving it, we're just-
Not approving it.
We're not approving it, we're giving staff direction to look into it.
I know that, but I know that.
But that, and that's good.
But it also leaves the impression, this is, this is a city initiative, working with a property owner, and it also leaves the impression we're on the road, and I'm not willing to do that at this moment.
Thank you.
I'm not either.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I just think it gives the staff permission to look into it, and to do what we need to do, to find out if they'll-
I would need more information to look at.
We don't need to do nothing.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let me check here. We'll start the vote in Ward 1.
There you go.
Oh, boy. Um, no, I'm sorry.
Two?
I'm voting yes because I want to keep him in the city.
Three?
No.
Four?
No.
Five?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Singer, do you have anything else?
Uh, yes. Next, we have a budget amendment. We've got an increasing workload, a number of developments coming in. We're also implementing electronic permitting software, and hopefully, in, in the near future, and a number of other changes to make us more responsive to the public. Excuse me.
public. Excuse me. We also are trying to work through some programs with the CRA with respect to code enforcement and our obligations there in getting code enforcement money. So in order to do that, after discussions with the city administrator, we're looking at adding an assistant director for planning and community development. I think it also builds in some planning for the future to, you know, have people in line and also assist with the current duties and responsibilities in the city. We have put the position out there, and we've received applications. We have a candidate that we really like. They have not given notice on their current position. They have not been hired yet, so we are coming to you. And basically, the budget adjustment for annually, you'll see it in the next budget, they're requesting $98,500. And so to accommodate the rest of this fiscal year, we need about $30,350. And then also, we have some office improvements for cubicles in the inspectors' area that'll total $18,139 based on the estimate we received from the office equipment company. So with that, we're just requesting a budget amendment for this fiscal year.
Mr. Sanders?
You did not have this in last year's budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
Alright. And so why couldn't this wait for, after we have our budgets and you present your budget into the next budget year?
Well, we actually were starting the process to try to look for somebody earlier in the year. And as I said, you know, there were a number of candidates that we considered. And so it's, it's been ongoing for a while now that we've been looking into this, and we found somebody that we really like. And so I'd rather move forward on it to capture that individual rather than wait a couple of months for.
Well, procedurally, shouldn't we be bringing this to council for approval before we look for the candidate? Or do we look for the candidate and then do it? Is this the chicken and the egg? It looks to me like it's a little bit reversed.
Yeah, I think the salary considerations, we weren't sure where we would be. There were a number of candidates who would have wanted a lot more money, and determining that budget amount was part of the consideration of looking for.
Coming from the county, aren't they?
I'm sorry?
Probably coming from the county.
No, they are not. They're coming from Ohio.
Surprised you did. But, and so obviously you advertise this.
Yes.
And so I just, and don't take this as, as directed at you. It's directed at every department. Do we not require council approval before we advertise high-level positions? I don't know. I think we should, but that's my personal opinion.
Mayor, council, I don't know of any requirement that, that we get council approval to hire people. That's what the city administrator does. And I always bring it to council as it relates to the budget impacts, programmatic impacts and the like. In the year I've been here, there is a consistent theme about us having a great reputation in our planning department in the years past, and it being completely flip-flopped in the present and looking forward. I've heard that, if I've heard it once, I've heard it a thousand times. I've asked Robin to look at what could help us in that regard. Just as recently as this week, I had a developer that was doing seven homes. The permits fell through the cracks. Went to Public Works, Public Works didn't know they were holding it up for planning. Planning doesn't know they're holding it up for Public Works and the like. There's a business process problem with our permitting. Robin's taking that on.
Agreed.
There's also a platform. When you look at business process, I would think that this council and myself as the administrator and Ms. Singer as the director would want to know, how many permits are aging?
Right.
If you received 500 permits three months ago, how many of them are over 90 days? How many of them are over 60? How many are 30? What can we do?
Do we have a report for that?
That, Mayor, if I could just speak uninterrupted, thank you. And, and so what we're trying to do is fix that. The fix is basically both personnel, policies, procedures, business process, and platforms, technology. It's, it's no more complicated. When you look at that and go, if we can't handle it with what we have now and what we've had over the last couple of years of COVID and the like, how are we ever going to handle it with billion dollars of development coming into town? You just saw the 920 project, and we know about all of the other major projects that are in planning and the like, and everything in between. And so I highly recommend it. I didn't, I didn't recommend it. I actually required it. I said, we need to get help. And, and that's, we, we have a candidate that has the expertise, the technical experience, the, the public relations ability to work with the various constituencies. He's willing to work at this job for a reasonable salary based on his experience. Counselor talked about us, the county, people leaving the planning department of the county. We've already got a senior planner that came in from the county, very highly regarded. I haven't really worked with her closely, but everything I've heard, she's awesome. We had one of the best meetings I had with planning on Monday when we bought all the various components that touched the planning and the mapping of a permit. And you would be amazed at the complexity of it and how many different directions it could go in. It looks like Spaghetti Junction. You never know when the permit goes in here where it's going to go. We got work to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to make a motion, and then I'd like some discussion. I'm going to move for the approval of Budget Amendment Resolution BA 22-32.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Discussion. I, I think we all, coming out of COVID, have seen that we had individuals in positions that were working remotely. There might have been some communication issues. And now we're coming back. And thank goodness, the economy is, is still churning along and keeping going, and that's important. As a policymaker here, we hire professionals in department head positions to make the decisions to run those departments, and that's what I think this is.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so if I have this straight, so we need a $30,000 budget increase for the salary and then an additional 18 for Cubicore.
Yes.
So it's 48, 48, 4. The budget adjustment, where's the money coming from?
General fund.
What?
General fund.
Okay. Well, I, I definitely would like to do anything we can to make planning run better, you know, not, not on you, but as, as was stated, the previous couple of supervisors maybe weren't up to, anyway. So anyway, yeah, I could see, as long as we could, we could, and we have a decent employee that you desire, and he's, he or she is willing to come here, that's a big one.
Yes.
They're not going to, they're not going to, not take the job when we hire them.
Yeah, yeah. They're accepting, but as I said, they haven't given notice yet because they're waiting for this.
Yeah, I got no problem with this.
Alright, Mr. Sanders?
Some of the, I agree with Mr. Perry for a change on this, that there's, and do we track permitting by date, how old it is, section of town? You know, I've asked for this for a long, long time, and we get permitting, but I don't, I don't, it's not drilled down to where we actually can use that information for anything useful.
Yeah. The, the current system, I don't think allows for robust tracking. It's really incumbent on the contractor to.
By complaint?
Not by complaint, but to follow up on their permits. If we reject the permits, they have to respond to those rejection comments, and then they have to follow up and, and it'll go through processing and permitting, and they'll be notified. But if there's a holdup, if there's a rejection, it's up to them to follow through and come through on that.
I had an email that you received this week from an attorney that's threatening suit with us over a boat dock. Well, what was the issue that he couldn't get that done?
Yeah, we're trying to come up with consistent standards for boat docks. So if you recall the one that we had that was east of the hospital, they were claiming riparian rights, and we were talking about a boat dock similarly situated that is across the right-of-way from, from the property. And in that case, we expected a greater level of scrutiny because of the Riverwalk expansion. However, what we do for them, we got to do for everybody.
That's right.
And so what we were suggesting to them, now, it came about as a, basically a conversation with the city attorney that what we should probably be asking, if somebody is asking if they have riparian rights, is asking for a judicial decision on that. However, that's not in the code. And so the gentleman who brought up his boat dock the other day.
He said he had riparian rights. I don't know.
Yeah. And, and so I looked at the 22 other properties similarly situated to him on that same road, and I looked at what we had required in those. Only in a few cases did we put a replacement dock through a special use permit. So I, I mean, I, technically, I think we need to look at our code, and we are looking at our code.
I do too, and we agree on that.
With the planning commission.
Some of this.
But in any case, we, his dock, we have approved it based on it being similar to the other approvals. Okay, alright.
This is where we got to.
Well, wait a minute.
Well, but, but your point to permitting, that wasn't a permitting holdup. That was a decision regarding the technicalities of the code.
Well, but my question was, do we have staffing that's a problem versus management that's a problem? You're asking for an assistant director in planning versus, in other words, are we hiring too much management and not enough Indians?
I think we're going to be addressing some of the staffing issues under the new budget as well.
Because that seems to be where the problem is, that we can't push the paper fast enough. So it's not even getting to that level. And so we don't need more, this is my personal opinion, we don't need more chiefs to complain about the things that we're not doing down here. And I think the problem is down here.
Yeah, but I think some of the solution is in programs and implementing those programs. And that's where management comes in, is, is making sure that we have oversight on the programs that we're implementing to improve the system.
Well, I think, in my opinion, we should probably wait till this, bring it up in this budget. And you're only talking about the next 30 days. I would rather see it discussed with, among other things, because you're putting a new software system in, which is allegedly good. I don't know if it's good or not, you know, to, to track some of this stuff. And so I think we need some more policy and procedural discussion before we start hiring executives versus laborers to do the actual work. That's my personal opinion. And I, I think we just need to slow this down, only for 30 days. I mean, just get to go through the budget and ask more questions.
It's not for 30 days, because once we get the budget, it won't start till October 1st. But there's been a call to question by Mrs. Coker.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to call the question. We'll start the vote on call the question in Ward, find it here, Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yeah.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Question carries unanimously. Now, we're going to start the vote in Ward three on the budget amendment. Yes, four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Okay, and then Mr. Perry, unfinished business?
Mayor, just briefly, I believe on the 30th HUD is going to be coming into Bradenton and bring a team in. Counselor Coachman and I had talked, if you, council remembers, if council remembers, the regional director of Jacksonville office had come and said hello to council, and we were kind of busy that day as well, and she didn't have much substantive things to talk about. She just wanted to introduce herself. Well, Counselor Coachman asked me, and, and we got together with that individual. And as it relates to affordable housing, homeownership, financing, equities in neighborhoods, community development and the like, they have different segments of programs within HUD. It isn't traditional what you would think of in terms of traditional parochial HUD-type housing and the like. And we're the host city. What I will do is work with council and invite all council to attend that. I think it's going to be about a half-day seminar on September, I'm sorry, on June 30th. And I also will be working with our county partners and other folks in the community and the like to invite them to that as well. I think it'll be very informative as far as what the federal government's Housing Urban Development Program has. Of course, we're all familiar with the funding we get from the Community Block Grant Program, the CBGD grant, and some of the other federal programs that they administer as well. So I just wanted to let you know I'm following up on that.
Right, thank you.
Can I have a question? The CBGD money, is that why we had a special meeting here on the 29th? Is it because we have to meet the requirements to request that, or, and we just kind of slipped up?
Mayor, Counselor Sanders, that's correct. A special meeting is on the 29th for that particular submission. After the submission, it has to have a public comment period. And, you are correct in what you said. It was not timely submitted.
Okay. And I'm not criticizing.
I get it.
I'm just saying that the other part of that, that, that concerned me months ago, which was started some of this process of me asking so many questions, is that that department now reports through Administrative Services. It used to report through Planning. And that concerns me that it might not be still in the right area, and it's not even in your flow chart. I ask you about it, and you say, eh, person's one. So I was like confused, like, wait a minute, I don't know what's going on here. I'd like to know because I'm on that board. I'm also on the Bradenton Housing Board. So I want to know about that. It's a half a million dollars a year. So I was really upset that I didn't know that we've got a department that's not a department, or what we had was, we changed, we changed the structure, and I didn't know about it.
It was in the budget, I believe. Let me, let me just, I, I'm trying to answer your question, and I appreciate it. I really do. As you know, we had one individual, Vicki White, who was doing the job. She was at Planning, as you said. Tim Parks, who actually had, had done it before at the county level, at the state level, and I think at a local government level, and was well-qualified, had the experience. Those are difficult people to find. We had one in-house. And if you try to go find somebody with federal grant experience in the CBGD world or SHIP and the like, they're somewhat difficult to find. So my thought was, okay, well, we'll have Tim take that over, because he was doing risk management.
He was doing risk management?
We have another individual that we hired to backfill Tim's position for risk management, but staying on point. We moved him over to that, and it is within Administrative Services Division where we think it's a better fit. We talked a little bit about planning. It's, it's not unheard of to have that function in a planning department, but my previous positions and in most places, it's, it's not going to be within the planning department. Planning has enough on their plate, quite honestly, other than running federal grant assistance programs, which really isn't their specialty. I don't know, Robin's is a very talented manager, administrator and the like, and so I'm sure she has some experience with it. But typically, we'd like it in a, in a more prominent division where it can get enough attention. We do plan to expand that function ultimately, because I think there's some federal monies that are escaping us. I think that some of the programmatic changes that some of the councils have brought my attention, particularly in Ward five, can avail themselves to some of that. I think it's modest what we receive now. I mean, we were getting 21 million in Albuquerque. Again, it's a lot bigger. We get about 600,000 here and the like. I know Vicki was not particularly aggressive in, in seeking some of that money. And, and we do need to do a better job in it. I don't disagree with it, but that's my explanation. That's my story.
Right. And I think that what you're saying is you're trying to put that into grants that we need, we need to be asking for, because I do think we have not been a good, good job on that. We should have more than 500,000 in there. We probably should have, you know, a couple, million, a couple million. And so I think we missed opportunities, so I'm glad that you're, you're seeing, you're, you're doing that. That's not what my issue was, is, is I just didn't understand, I just didn't understand your flow chart, and it wasn't in there. And I discussed it with you, and you said, I look, you know, he's kind of wandering around. And so now I have a better understanding of that, that that was done about four, three, four, five months ago.
Thank you.
Nothing further, sir.
Nothing further. Alright, we'll go to council reports, Ward five. I know you love to start. It's on the list.
Thank you. Couple of things I wanted to talk about. First off, it was, it was interesting to hear the presentation from FDOT. I'm happy to hear that they're going to reach out more in the community this go-round than last time, because I missed a lot of those meetings. I heard about it afterwards. I also want to remind everyone, there was a proclamation that was done for Juneteenth, and there's a celebration that Dr. Jefferson has organized with, you know, a small group of people and, and help from the CRA and other funding. It's going to be a great opportunity to celebrate when all of the US of A that existed at the time was free. Everybody then knew on that given day, oh, we are free too. Okay. So it was everybody. And then we won't, we won't go on to the fights after that. But Juneteenth is really a great celebration. It's a happy celebration. It's not just for African Americans. It's for all of us. It's when, you know, all America became free or realized they were free. So please come out. It'll be nice. You'll be there? Great. You, you pretty much attend a lot of the things in, in the community.
Mandated.
Which brings to, also, I wanted to bring out that we had two successful meetings. This is really under the CRA, but I can't help it. You know, it's, I'm still Ward five. Two successful meetings with the community and two of the local parks that we have funding to revamp, make it nice, and, and hopefully encourage people to use it, because right now, the people that are using it aren't the people that we really designed it for. So it's, it's exciting that the community got involved. I have had quite a few citizens contact me still about recycle. Most of them are elderly, and I, I assured them that we will continue looking at that and trying to help some of those who cannot take their recycle to a receptacle somewhere. This elderly person was more than happy to. This elderly person was more than happy to still burn her, um, bin down, uh, bins or recycle, whatever she's gonna put it in now, um, to the curb, so, there was some way. I know in the past, it used to be if a, a citizen had some physical challenges, they got some form filled out by their doctor, and that meant that, you know, the workers went to, up in the yard and got their bins and rolled them out. Now, I don't know if I'm opening up a big can of worms, but, um, maybe that is something that we can consider for those people who cannot physically get their recycle, and they want to recycle. And, other than that, I still continue, even though it was great to hear, um, Ms. Mural, uh, Morel, come in and, 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 and express her appreciation to all the efforts that has been, that have been made to make her community, her, her area safer. Um, I know exactly what she, you know, means about that. Uh, unfortunately, now in my immediate area, that, that, they've traveled, so I have, uh, citizens that are constantly coming to me, and, but BPD has addressed quite a few of the things that have had increased, so. Other than that, Ward five is alive.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Coachman, and I could address a couple things. Obviously, the recycling is important, I've talked to a few people, and very important to make sure that the citizens realize this is a transition, we're three weeks in it now, and we've seen some successes in it, and we've seen some things where we can do better. And that's where it's an evolving situation, so as we get through that part of it, you know, it's definitely important. And then also, um, going back to the, the meetings at the parks, um, we had a meeting at the church over there with some CRA stuff that was greatly attended. The first park was basically almost the same people, so, that, the, the second park, Love Park, I was so impressed to see that the number of people that ended up coming out, and especially Councilman Love, who was in his nineties, and, you know, um, somebody said to me, well, Councilman Love and Mayor Evers, we never thought they'd be alive this long from what they were doing in those years of having fun, but, but did a lot of great things for our city that got it to that point, and I was very impressed with his family, talked with several of them, talked with some of your neighbors on some opportunity, and I think that's exciting, you know, to really start to think outside the box and change to, to get some of these properties that are either dilapidated or have leans on them, and some opportunities to really think outside the box how we can start that next level. So, that's exciting, I think there's some, some, uh, programs out there that will be willing to start that, and, and it's exciting to see. But no, that was definitely going to all of those was important, as well as just meeting the people and, and showing them that we're real, and we're trying to do it, and, and the, uh, the recycling is an evolution that we have to really work through and see what the next months will hold, as well as improving, when we're at ninety-plus percent recycling of what we're collecting, it seems to be good. Now, we just gotta get what the volume is as it goes forward, so, thank you. Ms. Coker?
Well, I hate to keep beating the recycling thing, but, uh, yeah, I mean, it's been a change, and I've had quite a few people that I've spoken with, and I think education is just the more we communicate, I think we're learning a little bit. Um, I think we will end up with a better recycling program when it's all said and done, and hopefully, we can mark the container things a little bit better. I myself did some things wrong, but I've learned, and so, um, you know, I, I, I hope we can help, I do worry about the, the elderly community, um, maybe there'll be some kind of Boy Scouts or somebody that, that can help, help them, because I think they, they wanna do their part as well, but, um, um, thank you, I know, I know we've all fielded a lot of calls and emails, but, um, thanks to Jim, I'm sure he's done the yeoman's work, but, and, and the people at, uh, it's all the ways.
I think the important part to the recycling is we've gotta get out to all the citizens is, please don't give up, you know, because we're trying to, and if you really believe in recycling, you won't give up, you'll give us a chance to succeed, and that's gonna be important as we go forward, to keep evolving and trying, because, you know, as I've said to almost every person I've talked to, you look at the cities and the counties around the state in the southeast United States, some of them had to eliminate it 'cause their recycler plants closed, you know, others just eliminated it 'cause it was easier to do. We did not take the easiest route, and, you know, I've asked some of them to, you know, when they make comments about, well, you know, I tried, I'm not doing it, you tried once, let's try it again and again, and if, if we can, if we can fix things, we're trying to, but the other part of it is, you know, it can be done better, well, send us your comments, because we're open to figuring out how to do it better. Ms. Coachman?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one of the comments I heard. Um, as I was educating this, uh, the citizen that I was talking with, and I talked about how, you know, do you rinse out those cheese jars? I said, sometimes I just throw it in the trash, 'cause I just don't feel like scrubbing so hard, and she goes, oh, no, I thought they had some kind of solvent. She thought that you just throw it in there, and there's some kind of, you know, process that they clean the, you know, the materials.
No, and that, that's where it becomes contaminated, we're trying, this is the educational part.
And I explained that, and she fully understood, but, yeah.
Thank you.
So, anyhow, um, the only other thing is, there have been a lot of disparaging comments made about the chief today, and it's just, and I have long felt that she is, um, she does an amazing job, and she's done, she represents our city, uh, I mean, even above, we're a small city, and I think, um, we're very lucky to have her there. I'm not saying there aren't family squabbles, and maybe there's room for improvement on things, but I just don't like the way it came across publicly today, and I just wanna give her my vote of confidence and tell her, um, I, 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 I hope we can all, you know, work through, through, through all this and not, not be so, um, I don't know, I'm just not real pleased with the way today went.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do know that Mr. McClellan is going to be doing a Zoom meeting with, uh, citizens involved with the League of Women Voters and another organization to discuss the recycling program and how it works, and, uh, how we are trying to be flexible with it and trying to, to do something other than just say, like, you know, the entire city and county of Jacksonville just went, we ain't doing it no more, and I, I don't think that that's what our citizens want to see, but when eighty percent of the recycled items in the past were contaminated and we couldn't take them, and then we have to pay double to have them go to the landfill, I think we needed to do something, and maybe Mr. McClellan's gonna give us some more information when it comes to, to his opportunity to speak, but, um, as I understood it, the first time we went out to, to dump the containers, ninety percent of what was in those containers was able to be recycled, it wasn't contaminated, and that's a huge, huge improvement. So, for all of the citizens out there that are doing the right thing and wanting to do the right thing, I think everyone here salutes you and thanks you for participating with us. Change is hard, but I think our environment's worth it, and I think trying to do the right thing is important. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, Blaylock Walters for agreeing to be a sponsor with the Juneteenth Celebration, and they are going to be working cooperatively with Take Stock in Children, and there will be a Take Stock in Children booth area information presented at that, that, uh, uh, community event, and it's because of Blaylock Walters, and I wanted to say thank you. I also want to just remind people that the Women's Resource Center does have a raffle for a reason going on. They are raffling off a Magnus electric bike, and as we saw in our FDOT presentation today, that, uh, perhaps people aren't using bikes as much as they could, so, you know, an electric bike would be a fun thing to use to, to go to work. Um, tickets are available at the Unique Boutique downtown here, and also on the Women's Resource Center website. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Roff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, I, I wanna thank our, uh, the first person that came up and spoke earlier, uh, asking for a request, I, I can't believe you sat through this entire meeting.
It was interesting.
You're, you got stamina? Um, and so, anyway, to, to explain my vote on that, uh, how, how I saw it, um, when I started, we still had rural land in the city, it's all gone. Now, basically, um, that's all suburban, uh, and then we have, so we have our suburban lands, most of the city is suburban, and we have our urban land, which is the downtown core, so I just see it, the city is like two, two classes, urban, suburban. And then, as far as property goes, we have residential, commercial, and very little industrial. We have just a little, little tiny bit of industrial here and there, mostly over by Tropicana, some down in the south-central part of the area. Industrial does not mix with residential. Commercial really doesn't mix with residential, but it's more user-friendly than, um, than, than industrial is. So, uh, what, what I saw happening on that site was that I, I saw the business as being industrial, coming in next to residential, and that's, that's what the issue was, didn't have anything to do with anything more than that. You know, and I, I, I do know if a restaurant or something goes in there, it's gonna be a certain amount of noise, but having, uh, come from a blue-collar family, I, I know, I know industrial very well, so, um, that, that was my, that was my issue, was the industrial next to residential. And, uh, um, actually, this, uh, issue that came up was industrial next to, I, I don't know what's next to it, and that, that worries me, I'm very, we've downgraded our two main corridors, Fourteenth and Ninth, um, which used to be commercial, and then turned into major car lots and stuff, industrial, and we've actually been taking away from their rights to be industrialized. So, it's kind of a policy that I've had, I'm sorry for the, the, the property owner that didn't fit and everything, it's just, all I have is my, um, you know, what I feel is right, that's, that's what I'm hired to do, is make, make opinions, and I'm, I'm trying to do what's best for everyone, and unfortunately, quite often, people lose, and I'm, I'm always sorry for that, but, anyway, thank you for sticking around all this time. I'm sure it wasn't worth it. Um, anyway, going to, to recycling, um, I just wanna make a few points that, you know, um, as Ms. Barnaby stated earlier, we weren't really recycling before, we were pretending we were, you know, so much of it was going contaminated that, and, and no one knew that. I mean, we knew it, but, and, and really, it got down to where, um, we were no longer able to do what we always have done very well, which is yard waste. I mean, this city has always been, the, the citizens, uh, you know, have always appreciated the yard waste, and, and with that was falling apart, basically, our system was, was breaking, something had to give. I had many conversations with, I walk the neighborhood, and I get hammered, um, by residents, you know, and, uh, you know, when we get into the conversation, I say, yeah, but we were gonna lose yard waste, and they're like, oh, my God, no, not that, you know, they're, they're, they're not that, they didn't have recycling for thirty years, they've had yard waste for thirty years. They, they, you know, might like recycling, but they don't wanna lose their yard waste. Um, and then, um, the, the last thing, and I spoke to Jim about this, so I'm not jumping on him, and I went to haul my first week's worth of recycling over there, and, uh, the box at Seventeenth Avenue, it, it, we, we made a man a sliding door on it, it's not big enough. It's just, you know, so we have to, we have to make it easy for our users, Jim said he's gonna fix it, and I just, I'm just, I'm not picking on him, I'm just saying, so you might wanna check your centers and see, you know, when I was there, there was a, there was a, there was a gentleman before me, there was a gentleman right after me, and, you know, uh, we do need to make it so people can use our, our centers, and, and, and...
I, I may?
Yes, sir.
As I mentioned to you, when the first five containers arrived, they didn't have a side door, so we manufactured a door on them, those are the smaller ones. Um, the newer, the, the next five came in, had the larger doors. We've ordered five more. What I've told our guys is, when the five more come in, which is expected the first of Ja- July, swap them out with the five that have the smaller doors out in the field, so that we can bring the smaller door ones in, make the retrofits in the yard, and then use them for re- replacement out in newer locations as we move forward.
So, they'll have to wait on that for a while?
Uh, just for another week or so.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, that's fine.
Can I have a question while you're at, oh, you, uh, what are those, so we're gonna have ten or fifteen? What, what?
We have ten.
You have ten, you're gonna replace five.
We've ordered five more so that we can be in a position to send them out to different locations as we, as we get additional requests from communities, where we're, we're talking to individual communities about, will you allow us to put one in your community?
Right.
And, and that's...
What was the cost of those?
Um, they cost about twenty-three hundred dollars apiece.
So, about twenty-three thousand?
Was the purchase price for the ten, yes.
For the ten. Uh, and, and we, I know a couple of years ago, this council wasn't seated at the time, we spent about six-hundred thousand dollars on garbage cans and recycling cans and so forth, I don't know if it's all, wasn't, isn't that true, but that was...
I, I don't recall the exact number, but there was a, it was a six-figure number to buy all of the, the blue bins.
Six-hundred thousand, uh, so, that's, part of that was, was that just garbage only, or do you not remember of it?
No, 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 the money that was spent at that time for those cans was for the blue cans for a single-stream recycle, a sixty-five thousand gallon.
Single stream, 'cause we went from the, uh...
Which we are now repurposing as yard waste containers.
Yep, yep, I'll take, thank you.
All right, and that will also, just on, on that recycling part, cans, that will also hopefully streamline some of our pickup with, using the blue cans now, to make it easier and safer for our...
And, and absolutely, I, I mean, I'm driving around town now and seeing people putting the materials in the blue cans, and I can only tell you, it makes every guy on the back of a truck happy, to be able to pick up it, roll a can over and have it tipped into a bu- into the container, rather than having to grab it by hand and, and carry it over and make a mess in the process.
Mr. Roff?
And so, Jim, um, my dad was a master welder, those doors that are too small, it's no problem whatsoever.
Oh, no, no.
Cut a bigger hole and make them functional.
No, absolutely, we know, 'cause again, they were, we, we did that in-house with our own welders, so...
Bigger is better.
Mr. Mr. Roff?
We found a toilet in one last week, discarded toilet.
We don't want them too big.
That's, that's the other thing, that was my comment.
We don't, yeah, but we also don't want...
Our new affordable housing.
Right. The people that are gonna be rec- look, there's criminals out there, I mean, we have a whole police force for this, you know, there are people that are just twisted, but we can't, we can't run our city because of them. The, the people that are choosing to recycle right now, they're the diehards. I mean, I've had people crying, because they said, I've been recycling my whole life, and you won't let me now, it's like, you know, I mean, that's heartbreaking, but, so we can't punish good people because bad people are bad. I mean, that's just, this, this is what we do, is we look out for everyone, and you know, everyone's not a scumbag. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roff. Mr. Sanders?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Second Avenue, we're getting ready to bid that out, and, uh, that's always been a, kind of a pet project of mine, for go from Braden Castle all the way down to the existing park that we're now building, and it's got a beautiful canopy over top of it, so it's a bicycle, walkable, uh, uh, area that, that's actually, uh, it fits in line with the presentation we had with FDOT, and satisfies getting the bicycles and people off of the main artery, so I'm really pleased about that. I'm hoping that that would, would get bid and get started this fall, or probably in a couple of months, and I think that that's gonna be a, it's gonna be a premier project, in my opinion, uh, from, uh, walkable, neighborly, um, area, so I'm, thank you for d- doing that, and I know that you put a lot of work into it with engineering and so forth, and our goal was to keep it, you know, the, the canopy there, you know, and not cut a tree down, not one tree would be cut down, and more sidewalks, more lighting, uh, more amenable to, to, to the whole neighborhood, and, and the neighborhood, I'm telling you, is really, really excited about it. Okay, um, last thing, and everybody here has talked about recycling. Couple of months ago, I, as a matter of fact, Catarina, uh, went to Venice, you know, about twenty miles down the road, and, uh, I, I asked, uh, Mr. McClellan if he would like to go, and he had an appointment with the, the park for the Arts Board, and so did, um, Ms. Singer. I believe, Mr. Perry, I, I think you might have been out of town, I'm not sure, but we would, we did a visit of the Police Department, the Fire Department, all departments, and one of the things that really stuck, there's a couple of things, and number one, the, uh, they have a tremendous volunteer, uh, group down there, like six-hundred people that come out and just take care of flowers, and they don't, they're not managing anybody, and they're not, you know, they just come out and do it, you know, they put flowers out and water flowers and pull weeds, and they're very dedicated, and that's run through the Chamber of Commerce, but they say, look, you know, we're, they're not getting anything for it, they don't get paid, we'll, we'll give them the tools and, and the, and the supplies and that kind of thing, so I was very impressed with that. They had, um, they, they've captured their, uh... They had, they, they've captured their golf front to where no development can be developed there. The only development they allow in that, their city is with private lands and, in which they can't stop. But one thing that really caught my attention was, they are doing recycling, and they're actually making a profit. And I said, wait a minute, how can that be? And so I had discussion with them, I'm gonna have more discussion with them, but they do subcontract it out, and it is at the door. It's, and so I'm not so sure I've been fully informed before we made this decision. So I'm, I'm gonna admit, I made a mistake. I don't think we should have pulled recycling. And I think we need to look at this, because this is independent, third party doing this, so there's no labor costs in us. And if they can make it work, I think we can make it work. And until we investigate this further, but I'm gonna take the position that we're not doing recycling in the proper manner, because there's another alternative that we haven't investigated. And this is what I'll hand to you, or I can give it to you electronically. And if they can do it, they're only twenty, thirty miles from here, we can do it. And I think we can put the program back in place, because I get more calls about that, that, you know, I'm not gonna get reelected because of that. That's what they tell me. I said, well, whatever. But I said, can I say this? I made a mistake, because I don't think we fully vetted it, you know? I don't think, Ms. Perry, you, you, mistake or not, or Mr. Mayor, I, I just think that here's a chance to repeal it and do it, at least try it. That this is a, this is a good deal for them, it's a good deal for us.
Well, obviously, talking about good deals before we ever know what the deal is is, and, and mistiming, but it's, you're talking about privatizing, and that's something that, you know, we've talked about over time, privatizing some of our garbage. The issues, and I think we need to see, the county right now is going through with their haulers, the two haulers we have here in town. I don't know if there's a third in this area that could do it, but there's two right now, and they're actually talking about bidding with the county and changing some of the way they do it in the county right now, because it's not working. So I think we did the right thing at the right time, and I, Mr. Sanders, you made a motion that every, or that the, you made a statement at that point saying that everybody should vote for this, so it's not a political thing.
Right.
And so...
And I was wrong.
And that, but you were wrong for saying that too, but you shouldn't have said that to the council. But, but I, okay, we admit that, but let's get the information, let Jim do it.
When I'm wrong, Mayor, I admit I'm wrong, and I try to fix things. You know, this, this, you just don't vote on stuff, and then all of a sudden, find out you're wrong, and you should undo it.
Right. But I'm saying, let's let the process go through.
I think we should undo it.
Sizing of the City of Venice is different than us.
Not much.
Uh, well, what is their size of their city?
It's about half.
So half is, is quite a bit. When you only get half of a, a police force that, half of a police force that votes on something, okay, now, it's, okay, it's my time anyway. So you can put innuendos out there and say, half of this or half of that is something. But we had a gentleman say today that ha- less than half of our police force voted, or sent in their replies, and that was only less than half. So ninety percent of less than half is still less than half. So we've got to address things correctly and truthfully through the whole thing. Well, I think we have more than a hundred and two officers, so.
Fifty-seven, sure.
Right. Fifty-six of a hundred and two, and then you go down to, we have a hundred and twenty-three sworn positions, so that's, it's glomatics there. So anyway, but no, I think it's important that, you know, my statement will stand. When something comes up, I will address it with the proper authorities, and if it's something that, you know, we've, we've addressed other things with them, and it didn't rise to the level of FDLE getting involved, we'll see what they come out with the one that we're on now. And I think that's important to let that process happen. And I still am gonna say this, I have total confidence in our chief, our administrative staff, our volunteer staff, which we have a great volunteer staff down there, as well as every officer that's in there. Whether there's some turmoil at this point or not, we're going through it. I've met with officers after this came out, got two sides to every story, and then there's the truth. So everybody has an opinion, and as long as we're going through the process of the union negotiations, I think that, you know, we need to let that happen. There is gonna be a chance for this council to weigh in on that when it comes, comes the right time. And I believe our administrative staff on the city side that is handling those negotiations is working in the, the good of the whole, and that's important to continue. So don't, you know, and Mr. Sanders had brought up earlier, the meeting on the twenty-ninth is a one-item agenda, which is basically just to make sure we meet the requirements of the CDBG. So that's all that will be on that agenda for that special meeting. And then also, I, yesterday, we had some flyers dropped off at City Hall about Sweet Deli Cafe at five thirty-one Thirteenth Street West. So, you know, this morning, I went by there just to see, and was very impressed, as well as talking to the owners. They said that they opened three weeks ago. Guess it took them four, five months to kind of get everything organized once they got it. And they talked about how great our planning department was to work with, and the smiling faces when they walked in the front door. So, you know, we know there's some things we can improve on, but we also want to know that there is people that things went well. So we're gonna continue to work through that, so let everybody know that. And I was very impressed with their menu, because it's, you know, it's a breakfast and lunch place, and it, it's, you know, I'm excited to go back for lunch and try their Cuban. It was just...
Lunch, lunch would be good.
Right, yeah. So it's, it's at five thirty-one Thirteenth Street West, right next to...
It's next to the old City Hall shoe shop.
Shoe shop, and...
Oh, yeah.
What is it?
Sugar Cubed was.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and, and right across the street is a smoothie bar that was open at seven thirty this morning.
Nine four one Nutrition.
Yep, so no, there's a lot of great things there going on, and so we see, and that was one of the things that I've always liked about our city. We have a main street, but we also have additional streets that are starting to develop and, and go through. So I think there's gonna be some great opportunity as we go forward for that positiveness to be there. So I think that's about it, other than, you know, enjoy summer vacation and kids stay safe. Thank you. Department heads? Chief?
It would've been easier for me to probably say it in the back, but I'm gonna leave everybody with a, a positive story, like I oftentimes try to do. It was an email that came in this morning while we were engrossed in this meeting. One of my detectives, one of our detectives, William Mulligan, was on his way to work this morning and came across a just occurred accident. It was an overturned vehicle that had caught on fire. As usual, the police were there first.
No pun it?
Actually, a Fish and Wildlife officer also arrived on scene, community members, put out the fire. The woman was hanging upside down from the car, and they rescued her. They pulled her around in time, got her over to Blake, and it seems like she's gonna be fine. Officer did get an exposure, both officers, but sometimes I need to see those things to remember what the mission is, what we're all about, and what this community is all about, and it's coming together, and, you know, doing what we do best. So just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, any other department heads? Fire Department?
No response.
No response. Yes, Catarina?
If we're late to your meeting, you'll know why, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to, in reference to the park engagement events that we had, thank you for coming out. They were wonderful. We had great turnout. But I want to give kudos to BPD and Public Works. We worked great together, and the work is now starting. So when we unveil the improvements, we'll all go back and enjoy them. So, thank you.
And those hot dogs on that great grill.
They, they were great.
Everybody loved them, so.
It was, it was very hot, and all of us that were there putting tents, taking them down, and being there for residents. So thank you to both departments for making it happen.
I'll just share that the hot dogs were cooked on what we have deemed the Barnaby Grill. Councilwoman Barnaby brought over a grill from, I think you picked up on the curb.
Yeah, it was outside my neighbor's house, and I thought somebody could use it.
You brought that to the yard, and we've already put it to good use. So it does fine on hot dogs. As, as far as the recycle goes, it is a work in progress. I would be happy to take a look at what you've got. I'm also setting up a meeting here in the near future with another company that's interested in, it may even be the same company, I'm not sure. And we've said all along that we would evaluate this on, on an ongoing basis and make changes as we need to. One of the things that we've found out is that it appears as though, as, if you think about it, people are using the recycled containers more on the weekends, and they fill up on the weekends. So our original plan was to empty on Wednesdays. We're now looking to be emptying them on Mondays and on Fridays, so that we're picking up what's done on the weekends and prepping them for use on the weekends. So we will continue to monitor that. We're also instructing our guys that when they check the cans on a daily basis, that they take a rake or a shovel or something of that nature to push the materials away from the door to provide, because in some cases, people are going, thinking the container's full, it's not. It just appears as though it looks that way. There's still plenty of room in the containers. Last week, I believe, the total was three point seven tons of material that we were able to recycle. As we move forward, I'll be happy to report back as that, I haven't had a chance to look back and compare that to what we would historically be taking to a recycle facility. But we'll have metrics involved, moving forward to be able to evaluate the process.
Great. I do have a question for you, Mr. McClellan. Did we ever charge for recycling?
No.
So the process started originally, if I'm, we were making a little money when we'd take it, then it changed to where probably was nothing, then it changed to where we were paying. And some of the criticism has, has been glassed that they don't take, but it's not us that doesn't want to take it. It's, there's nowhere to take it anymore, unless we go to Georgia, if I'm not mistaken.
That is what I, of the understanding of, yes.
So, so some of that is, as we go forward, and we've talked about this a lot, I've told every person that I've talked to, that this will be a work in progress. It also, you know, was, there is, was no charge to you, so that's, there's no refund. I think you pay seventeen fifty-six for everything we do a month on your water bill. But if we go forward with privatizing, that may change the method of what we do.
Well, when we first looked at the possibility, because we had actually evaluated it, and it was, it was going to be an additional cost over what we had in our budget related to recycling. That's not to say it doesn't change. So again, happy to look at any alternatives.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And we've never charged for yard waste.
And we've never charged for yard waste.
That's what, so...
But we're not eliminating yard waste.
I, I know, I, I know, but I'm telling you, so when you talk to people, let them know that we salvaged yard waste, because they, they really value that. They really, really value that.
Do we do one job with three items? Very bad. Or do we do two jobs very well?
That's, that's the equation.
That is, and that's what I've told them all along. We're gonna try to do this, but month, three months, six months, we're evaluating it, and we're gonna adjust. And, and I just just told the one gentleman that sent me a, an interesting email, but, well, I've tried once, and I, now I'm quitting. Well, I sent him back, please don't quit after one week. Give us some time, and please send back thoughts. Because he said our first, the idea of our first was over, over burdensome. But there's many ways to do it. But I'm not gonna do it anymore. So I said to him, please, send me those ways, because we're open if you have an idea. We're willing to listen. Like Mr. Sanders' idea, privatizing might be an option. We talked about that, you and I talked about it five, six years ago, when we were talking about, how do we do it? And then the blue bins, and then all that. So, you know, that's something we've talked about, to make it better long-term.
Well, I would tell you, the, the concept of privatization of it as a, as a side stream, if you will, is far less impactful at this point, given how it's configured, because we have already reallocated the resources to other divisions within solid waste, so that the specter of going to privatization and the loss of jobs that would be going along with it would not be applicable in the case.
So there's opportunity, but the cost factor could play into it.
Right.
If you have to now add to water bills more money. All right, thank you. All right, any other department heads? Hearing none, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.
All right.